I'd like to call the February 28th, 2023 Planning Commission meeting to order. The Planning Commission has returned to in-person hybrid meetings. The City Council asks that when attending city meetings, persons socially distance as best they can and be courteous to those who continue to choose to wear a mask. Members of the public can attend the meeting in person or observe the meeting on Zoom on Access Humboldt Channel 10, online by visiting www.cityofarcada.org and clicking on the "See Live Meetings, Agendas, and Archives" button on the homepage or on the city's YouTube channel. Viewing on Zoom will provide the closest to real-time access as possible, and YouTube has a time lag. Those on Zoom may provide public comment after in-person attendees speak. If you want to comment during the public comment portion of any item, click on "Raise Your Hand" on the right-hand side of your screen. The clerk will unmute you. Speakers will have three minutes to comment, subject to the chair's discretion. The first item on our agenda is the land acknowledgement. The City of Arcata acknowledges that the lands we are located on are the unceded ancestral lands of the Wiat tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Wiat language as "gudene", meaning "over in the woods" or "among the redwoods". Passed actions by local, state, and federal governments removed the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threatened to destroy their cultural practices. The City of Arcata acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement seeks to aid in dismantling the legacy narratives of settler colonialism. Next, we have roll call. Staff, will you please call roll?
Yeah. Commissioner Lehman?
Present.
Commissioner Simmons?
I'd like to say that I will be missing the next meeting, unfortunately, and the workshop, I'm sorry about that, but that's life.
Thank you. Commissioner Simmons?
Here.
Commissioner Tagney?
Here.
Commissioner Figueroa?
Here.
Commissioner Mayor?
Here.
And Vice Chair, Acting Chair Davies?
Here.
And I'll note for the record that our Chair, Julie Vissade Elcock, is not with us tonight.
Staff table?
Yep. David Loyah?
And?
Delo Freitas, our Senior Planner?
Perfect. Next, we have oral communications. This time is provided for people to address the Commission or submit written communications on matters not on the agenda. At the conclusion of all oral and written communications, the Commission may respond to statements. Any request that requires Commission action will be set by the Commission for a future agenda or referred to staff. I will start with those in the room, then we'll hear from those on Zoom. Please line up if you wish to speak. I will allow three minutes for each speaker.
Good evening. The public is a little confused as far as... We had the Fire Department in Fire District here, and they basically said they didn't want to see any buildings built over three stories because of they don't have the equipment, the facilities, or the money. So they're a little confused how we're proceeding with this, that we're still talking about five, six, seven-story buildings. So it would be nice if somebody could address that. The other thing is that part of this is Cal Poly. I was probably one of the few people that wrote the trustees. And the response is, you know, very... From a lawyer, probably, but they basically said the fire issue is not significant. So that's a very strange word that they underline, "not significant", because that's also the same strategy UC Berkeley used in the Berkeley versus Berkeley case. And the California courts, you know, were pretty clear on this, that they weren't very appreciative of environmental impact reports that said "not significant", and this went all the way up to the Supreme Court. I would also point out that, you know, we all know that after... Well, maybe not all, everybody knows, but, you know, legislative body overruled that. So, but that's not the case with the Gateway. You wouldn't be... You would still have to follow under the rulings of the California Supreme Courts. So I'm a little confused about that, so maybe we could address that. The other aspect of, you know, I think a comment was made about how will these age, these buildings, these mid-rise buildings, and the Gateway project? And I would say that Miami is a very good example of that because there's a long history of buildings, hundreds of them, from 50s, 60s, 70s, 80s. The most famous one, for the wrong reason, is the one that was built in the 80s that collapsed in Surfside. And that was really connected this, you know, they're saying right now that it's connected because of sea level rise, the intrusion of salt water, and what it did to the concrete and rebar in that building. And I also know that the other problem was that, you know, when structural engineers came and basics said it was an issue, the people did not want to make the investment. It was like, I don't know, $3 million. Second time it came around, it was $11 million, and they hadn't quite got their act together. So it collapsed, and there's a lot of other buildings that are red-tagged now because of that. And also, there's also 30-year inspections now that are going on. There's a lot of problems going on with those buildings and a lot of lawsuits because people don't want to make those big investments into those buildings. So that's a question I wanted to bring up, since I think it was Peter that brought that up.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, I would like to cede my time to Fred Wise.
Thank you.
Hold on one second, Fred.
Okay.
I'm gonna have to use it.
Could you just hit that one twice, Scott?
I can, but it's gonna beep at you in the middle, so I was...
That's okay, that way I can see it.
You prefer that?
Yeah, I can see what... Thank you very much.
You got it.
My name is Fred Wise. I have a number of things to report. I have a friend who has been a developer in Atlanta. He's built 30,000 units, $4 billion with the real estate. He's retired now. He's now working on affordable housing. He has a project coming up, breaking down in the fall, breaking ground. He calls it workforce rate housing. It's $20... People who earn between $20 or $25 an hour. He's figured out how to do it. I talked with him for an hour the other day. He's using sort of every trick in the book. And if I get more information, I'll report back to you. But it's exciting. I don't know how much it can apply here, but it's worth investigating. A letter that I wrote in the Mad River Union was printed last week. I said, "If the Gateway plan is not going to provide actual affordable housing for people who need it, then what's the point? If working people can't buy a home and they can't afford the rent, then maybe we need to think this through more." I've realized that my real goal here is to provide housing for working people. I'm not disparaging to homeless people, but this is really important to me. I wrote... We need to discuss affordable housing, I think. David's mentioned it, Scott, you've mentioned it. I wrote a little report. You'll get it by email in about an hour. And it's a starting point. I'm not saying this is a manifesto, but it's a starting point for the conversation about what's the definition of affordable? What are we really trying to achieve here? The, as you know, a few members of the public took it upon ourselves to record the study session with Ben Noble. And it's online, it's had 38 views so far. I'd like to record the next two, and it would be helpful for Commissioner Lehman if it was recorded. The City Council is gonna see if they can provide funding for us. It's about $175 per time. There's an important thing that I'm sure that you thought about, but I wanted to bring up. All the community benefits and the privately-owned public access open space tables are based upon a base tier of four stories, at which point no community benefits, zero, or public space are required. We've seen Chris Dart explain that it may not be economically viable to build above four stories. This is something that I think needs to be talked about. We want the community benefits. We don't want to make it difficult to developers, obviously, we've talked about that, or make it such that they can't build. But it's... There's a disconnect there. The... Two weeks ago, I presented this idea that we'd use the AmeriGas site as a test bed to develop the form-based code. The more I think about that, the more I like the idea. I envision a roundtable discussion, have some 3D modeling or maps, and everyone can kind of chip in what their ideas are about how... What kind of form-based code would be required for that site? I think that if you can, as I said last time, if you can develop criteria for form-based code for that site, you've got 85% of the Gateway area licked. Question is, how is the form-based code developed? Well, there's, in my mind, there's two ways. One is that you, the Commission, come up with a set of criteria, give it to the consultant, Ben Noble, and he develops the form-based code. The other is that he can propose something, and then we can look at it, modify it, edit it, that sort of thing. I'm gonna suggest that we ask him to give us, not even a proposal or a draft, just something to start the conversation, and then look at that. Because the process of, if I can say this politely, of the Commission coming up with the criteria for form-based code, that could take six months or something. He's got a lot. I mean, it's clear from what he's shown us so far. The... Something came up last week that was disturbing, and I think it can be remedied, of course. The Transportation Safety Committee had a strong recommendation for L Street to be developed as a linear park. David was at the meeting back in August, and he typed it. We saw him type it, it was on the screen. But when it got to this table, it was quite a bit different than what David had typed. And I think perhaps in June or so, Commissioner Mayor, we had the conversation that you wanted to see things, your recommendations, you wanted to come back to you the next time. I think the Transportation Safety Committee would ever have seen this, that it was so distorted. I know that there's issues, you know, it was a condensed or summary, but their language was very clear, and again, David typed it clearly. So that's something, as we hone down, you know, all the things that have been discussed, all the hundreds of things that have been discussed, that is something that's gonna have to be watched. Now, all the things that you've discussed over the last year, that we haven't written them down. I mean, we haven't come back after a week. In theory, we could look at the video. That would take dozens of hours, but it may be what's needed to see what you actually said. The Gateway concerns and solutions that you worked on for three sessions, I think you can finish it up in a half an hour. I think it's real important. You would want to prioritize what's here, list the experts, figure out which things are required before you develop the form-based code and which things can wait till later. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
To sort of expedite things, if folks have comments, if you want to go ahead and line up now, that's fine.
I apologize for that. James Becker, just a couple of quick things, so I won't take up a lot of your time. I did go to the Form-Based Code workshop and just had a few thoughts on it. And I realize it's things that you're working on, a work in progress, but there is a recommendation for a policy or code. There'll be zero parking requirements for the... As far as residential, high-density infill. And I think down the way, as this progresses and it becomes more apparent that the availability of parking on the street will become more and more of an issue, you might consider some modeling to think when, you know, realistically, it might be time for a parking garage. Because I think as this progresses and there's no requirements for on-street parking, it'll be something to consider. And I don't really consider this to be something like a complaint, but more just a concern down the way. And then also, in the privately-owned public spaces, I also recommend that they should... The required space should start at four stories and not beginning over 30,000 square feet at four stories. And in addition, the parking loofes should hopefully remain within the Gateway area as things move forward, if there isn't the availability for the privately-owned public space and the requirements. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else here in the room care to comment? Anybody online? David?
I've got one online. Go ahead, Jane.
Good evening, Commissioners. I have two recommendations to propose for consideration in advance of tonight's Planning Commission meeting and tackling the subject. Consider asking the city and Plan West to focus on laying out a visual representation of L Street as a linear park along the lines of what was proposed in the 2010 report, and then the building options surrounding such a park, along with the depiction of K Street being maintained for two-way traffic, with as many modifications such as bobos as can be placed there to increase safety, keeping in mind that bike and pedestrian traffic can continue to use the L Street linear park and thus need less space on K Street. The currently proposed park area is far from the center of the Gateway area, down near Seminole. And my second one is that please consider Creamery District already is and can be further developed as a major community center for the entire Gateway area in conjunction with its position alongside the linear park. The Creamery already hosts special events, both inside and outside during good weather, and could be further developed to sponsor musical and other outside activities, classes, et cetera, market locations, et cetera. Infill around dedicated parkland tends to be highly prized, and it already supports bike and pedestrian traffic. This trail/ pathway extends north and south through the Gateway area, and the city would not need to purchase additional parkland. Thank you very much. I hope you will look into these, and as Fred said, let's give us a visual representation of the two alternatives so we can have some choices and see what these would look like. So far, we have not done that, and I think we need to tackle K Street. I mean, the traffic we're talking about on K Street is not going to occur for some time. So I just think it would be very useful to lay this out so we can examine it and talk about it and see what we're gonna do about it. Because linear park, a decision needs to be made because it affects many other decisions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's all the public comment for oral communications.
Thank you. We will now move to item three, the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine and are adopted in one motion. If anyone would like to discuss an item, it will be removed from consent. We have one consent calendar item this evening, which is to approve Planning Commission minutes from our regular meeting February 14th, 2023. Would any member of the Commission or public like to remove an item from the consent calendar? Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. We will now move on to public hearings. I mean, let's see. Are there any ex parte communications from Commission members? Okay. We have no public hearings this evening, so we will now move to business items. We have one business item on the agenda tonight. Discuss the general plan update with emphasis on land use and growth management element updates. But before we get to the staff report, I want to go off-script for a minute and just speak about the sort of clunkiness of this process that we're all engaged in and how it can feel sometimes up here. And I know how it feels out there because of your comments and because of the letters that we get. So, you know, a number of people, those of you that come to our meetings regularly, people that call in, people that write to us, I know there's a general sense that the same issues come up again and again, whether it's concerns about the Fire Protection District, sea level rise, Chris Dart, Dan Co., these things come up, and I... It's frustrating for me because the way these meetings are structured, we don't really have an opportunity to have a back-and-forth about it. And my assumption from hearing your comments and reading your letters is that it often feels like we're not listening or paying attention because otherwise, how could we still be discussing what we're discussing, given the importance of the issues that you bring up? So I just wanted to take a minute to say, I think I can speak for the Commission, certainly speaking for myself. We are so paying attention. These issues are huge. They're complicated, they're complexed, they're nuanced. And so I wanted to just briefly touch on a couple of issues that come up regularly. You know, first on that list would be sea level rise. Many commenters say, "Given the concerns we all have about sea level rise, how can you still be talking about this?" And I would just say that we're all deeply, deeply concerned about sea level rise. We're so concerned that we have unanimously requested a special session on this, which will be at the end of next month, to discuss sea level rise outside of our normal track for reviewing the Gateway plan. So I know that it requires a little bit of patience, but just because we don't sort of respond in meetings to these things time after time, please know, we're really concerned about it. And regarding sea level rise, please come next month. We're gonna have a special session with a variety of experts where we'll be able to ask our own questions, public engage. So I know it requires a little bit of patience, but please be patient and know that we're listening. Something that up... Something else that comes up regularly that we get letters about, people comment, is that this sort of sense that Chris Dart said these buildings are not buildable, so why are we still talking about it? And speaking for myself, as a Commissioner, I would say that is not how I interpret what Chris Dart said. I interpret him saying there are some variables, some of which that could change, but that currently, they're not in a position, Dan Co., to build them. But let's just, even for the sake of the discussion, let's say that Dan Co.'s position is these buildings are not buildable. So what? Like, we're not writing this Gateway code for Dan Co. There are any number of other companies locally, across the state, across the country, that are building buildings. And just because one local company doesn't see a pathway to build one of these buildings, to me, does not seem a reason to say no to the entire thing. And one of the things that it makes me think about is that we're not talking about doing this right now, this evening, next week. This is a planning document that's going to stretch over 20 years of the next 20 years of Arcata's future. And it would seem to me just really the height of hubris for us to sit here and think that we know what technological changes are gonna occur in the next 20 years and assume because one contractor makes a decision now that we're not able to do it. Just as a brief check-in, if we think about 20 years ago, I just wrote down a few things that we didn't have 20 years ago: smartphones, Google, YouTube, Bluetooth, Facebook, or electric cars. All of those things did not exist 20 years ago. And so as we do this work, we're trying to crack the door open for possibilities in the future that we can't possibly imagine right now. And I think when the marsh was envisioned, there was a lot of pushback. It hadn't been done before. Is this really gonna work? And thank goodness that the city and the Planning Commission moved forward with it. This is a project that's now the jewel of Arcata. And so just to wrap things up and get back to the meeting, I want to say, we appreciate your patience, and I want us all in the Commission and in the public to have some vision and leave ourselves open to the kind of things that can and will undoubtedly change over the next 20 years as we sort of move forward with this. So... Okay, with that, I would like to get to the staff report, but I would like, David, if you could just respond to the question that comes up so regularly regarding the Fire Department. I know that there are ongoing conversations with the city and the Fire Protection District. Can you speak to that? Because I know that's a concern that a lot of members of the public share.
Yeah, absolutely, and thank you for that, Vice Chair. The city released a press release, and I believe the Fire Department, Fire District also is messaging out similar information through their channels. And I forwarded that same information to each of you via your emails last week. Just letting you know and letting the public know that the Fire District, Cal Poly Humboldt, and the City of Arcata are working together, small working group, to address the concerns that have been raised. I'd say, you know, we're making positive steps to move forward. We see a clear path to move forward, and I believe that we're gonna have some, you know, some results that we will continue to share out and message out over the coming weeks as we, you know, work together to develop those solutions. So didn't want to just let the Planning Commission, the public, know that those conversations are in progress. They have, you know, been in progress, but they're, you know, more formalized now at this point. And we have an actual working group working on the issues.
Yeah, thank you. I think it's great to know that the city and the Fire Protection District are both actively working together on this. I think that's really important. Can we have a staff report, please, for our discussion this evening?
Yeah, absolutely. And I did hear you mentioning just before the meeting that you're hoping to wrap this portion by 8:30 at the latest to provide time for public comment. So I'll try and respect that and reflect on that as we give this presentation.
Thank you.
I just wanted to start by reminding you, this is kind of a continuation of the discussion about growth management and land use element. Those were provided to you in a packet several meetings ago, and we picked up growth management in earnest last time. We left off with land use, and we'll be digging into that in more detail this time. In your packet from last meeting, you did have some comments that were submitted by Commissioner Mayor and Commissioner Simmons, which I'd draw your attention to as we go through this material. They each made, you know, comments about different elements of the work that you're going over. We did note last time that the land use map somehow in the scaling didn't quite capture the whole city. I've got the land use map here, and that's one of the first things I want to go over when we get to the substantive detail after describing these, you know, general issues. But I also wanted to reflect on some of the confusion that happened last time as we were probably referring to different documents in terms of the page numbers. So as we discuss these, what I'd encourage us to do, since we asked you to bring forward your packets from prior meetings so we didn't have to reprint them, is that if you want to discuss a specific policy or section number, refer to the section number that's labeled within the document. So for example, you know, growth management starts out. The introduction is labeled 2.4. Instead of referencing Packet Page 46, reference Packet... Or reference Section 2.4 to orient us to where in the document that you are looking. So with that, I want to start. I know we discussed a lot about growth management, and I don't feel like that conversation probably got completed. But I do want to launch into the land use element to start the conversation tonight and hopefully make good headway. I want to start with the land use map. The land use map is... And I'll zoom back in, but just to zoom out a little bit to show the entire city. Land use map in your packet has, you know, several areas that are identified with existing zoning that is not intended to change. For example, the baylands down here, where you can see my cursor on the screen, the big green area, it was green before. We're proposing to leave it green in the future. That green means agricultural exclusive. There's no proposed change in zoning for those. For the areas where we do propose a change in zoning, we've given these little tags to tell you a little bit of information, so I want to orient you to that information. First, we have a reference to an exhibit. Those exhibits refer to these zoomed-in maps. And so these show the specific parcels and the zoning change that is... the zoning change that is intended to be reflected on those various parcels. And then it also tells you what the zoning change is. So these group of parcels here that are brown, the idea is that they would be going from commercial general to commercial mixed, or from residential medium to residential high. And so you'd have to look at Exhibit 10 to see the detail on those zoning changes here. All of these changes, with the exception of a very few, the Planning Commission has looked at before in various ways, either through review of the Local Coastal Program Update, or in the context of the Gateway Area Plan review that we've been doing, or through other conversations. I do want to kind of do an aerial overview of the maps, starting in the north here, to look at the changes that are reflected in the map, and also to discuss the potential for additional changes that staff would like the commission to consider in your deliberations today. Excuse me as I reorient a little bit here. Sorry, Dila, crushed your tag there. Okay, so starting off in the, the north of the city here, in the Valley West, Valley East area, we are proposing to change some of the area that's currently zoned industrial limited to mixed use. This is also, you'll see some of these areas that have a dark highlighter, or a dark outline, rather, around them. Those are areas that were identified in the housing element as these infill opportunity zones. Recall, the Gateway Area Plan is one of the first infill opportunity zones that we've been working on to address the mandatory rezone identified for our housing element process. This area right here, which, I don't know, maybe looks like Florida or something, you know, with an extra appendage, is another infill opportunity zone. It includes the commercial general area that is where the, you know, the Rays Shopping Center is, as well as the, you know, developments on the corner here and the Hampton Inn. The industrial zone properties we had suggested be changed to commercial mixed as an intimation towards this idea that we would be doing an infill opportunity zone, upzone there, and this kind of gets us started, since we don't have the detailed planning work necessary to do the entire zone. As staff reviewed this, we started wondering why we didn't just extend this recommendation to go from, you know, industrial limited to commercial mixed, out to the commercial general, to go to commercial mixed as well. So that's one area we'd like you to consider. That would be something new that's not reflected on this map, something that we haven't discussed yet. But this would apply standards that would allow for higher density residential and a lot more flexibility in development on all of these parcels. And as you're well aware, there are several vacant or underutilized parcels out here, the shopping center being one of them. It's got a gigantic parking lot, it's got a huge area out in the back that's part of the service entrance that could be redeveloped and repurposed. The other areas you've seen before, again, commercial visitor serving, the recommendation here is to go to commercial general and eliminate that commercial visitor serving underlying zoning. We could talk in more detail about the reasons for that, but what we found in implementation of that commercial visitor serving is it really isn't functioning the way that we had initially intended. Going to the east and south a little bit, here's Happy Valley, just to orient you, here's West End Road, 299-101. Happy Valley is off West End Road, it's property owned by the City of Arcata, and Butts Green, Diamond, and other timber, independent timber operators outside the city here. Currently, it's industrial general. The proposal here is to change it to industrial limited, and that's an area where we'd like the, you know, commission to weigh in, and we can get into more detail. There may be a need due to some of the relocation proposals that we have associated with the Gateway Area Plan, in particular with Mad River Lumber, I'm sorry, with R&amp;L Lumber, to, to retain some of this industrial general zoning, so we can relocate them out here. That's a possibility. Is there a question, Chair?
I just wondered, isn't that the, is that the area where the trail into the community forest takes off? Is that what we're talking about?
There's, there's, I'm sorry. Yeah, there's a trail on the south end here that goes up this way, and there is a plan to extend those trails through this property, and then across land that Green Diamond owns, so that you can get to Alter Grove Road by trail.
Thank you.
Zooming south and into the center of the city, this is the area around St. Louis Road, and just adjacent to the highway, here's Highway 101, there's James Creek Meadows, if that helps you orient. This was another infill opportunity zone. The idea for this site is just to upzone everything. There's a smattering of different zone types, industrial general, industrial limited, residential low, residential medium, just to consolidate those all into a residential high zoning district and basically upzone those. This is an area that has probably a long vision for redevelopment, because many of these parcels are, there are many small parcels and separate ownerships. One of the original reasons for identifying this as an infill opportunity zone originally was the Craftsman's Mall, which was former proposal for the village development, and there's some opportunity there for rezoning and, you know, thinking creatively about how that would integrate for, for housing. As you're all aware, Cal Poly now owns that, isn't subject to the city's regulations for the development that they're doing. And so the, the primary purpose for doing, you know, more in-depth planning work out here has largely been, you know, replaced by, by that purchase. So what we're proposing is to leave this as residential high and, and allow things to change over time. In Exhibit 4, you'll see the area around Spear and Alliance that is in the coastal zone. This dotted blue line represents the coastal zone. Everything west of that or south of it is in the coastal zone. Everything that's on the other side of it is outside. This whole area right now is zoned variously residential, very low, there's a little bit of commercial general and residential low density. The commission had seen this when you were looking at the Local Coastal Program, and you told us at that time you wanted these to be upzoned to residential medium density, and then to make the, the corner commercial, general just commercial mixed, to give, again, giving a little bit more flexibility with the zoning there. Not anticipating any changes, especially on the corner with the gas station, but there is a vacant, you know, parcel across the street that could have some development there.
Could you locate the shopping center for us on this map? And is the little blue thing the pump station? Without street names here, it's really hard for us to...
Yeah, the...
Know exactly what's going on.
Which shopping center?
The Westwood Shopping Center? Is that south of there?
South of here, yeah. We'll get to that.
And is that the, is that the pumping station there, the blue thing?
That's very keen eye, yeah. That is the city's pump station, or it's, it's water, water facility. And this is 27th Street, Alliance and Spear. Okay, zooming out just a little bit, and then going south again. We've got an area that is currently zoned industrial limited. I'm sorry to orient you, this is, this is Alliance, and we've got, I'm sorry, this is not Alliance. Yes, this is Alliance. This is the Creekside Annexation Parcel here. And there are some, some parcels that were sort of legacy zoned, if you will, that are right off Alliance and in sort of the mix where Foster comes down and hits Alliance, where there's potential for additional development. This is where the Quanta Hut is, the General Machine is there. There are some apartment buildings on the corner, just to orient you there. This is a mix of industrial limited zoning and ag residential zoning that is on this block, and the proposal here is to, you know, bump these up to residential high. We had talked about this, I don't know that you've ever seen this in a map format before, but we had discussed these changes when looking at the, early in, in the process of looking at some of these upzones.
David, can you just indicate the cross streets, so I can locate that?
Yeah, this is Alliance, here's 17th, I'm sorry, this is Foster, and here's 17th Street. So it's bounded between 17th and Foster and Alliance.
Isn't that the Cheese Factory?
Cheese Factory is on this AE zone parcel here. And I'm sorry, Judith, I skipped right over the, I'm sorry, Commissioner Mayor, I skipped right over the, the shopping center, because there are no zoning changes proposed here.
David, can I just ask, at Foster to the west, does the dash line represent the new city boundary?
Yeah, these include...
Things for the annexation?
This includes the annexation parcel, which is here, and Enos Park, which is here, which was also annexed at the same time. So both of those are included now in the city boundary.
Is that the parcel that the university just purchased?
The university did purchase this parcel. It was formerly known as the Creekside Parcel, was going to be approximately 90 units of The North Town area is shown here as going from commercial general to commercial mixed. Again, this is a corridor that's immediately adjacent to downtown, immediately adjacent to the university, shown on the public facility zoning here across the highway. So the recommendation is to go from commercial general to commercial mixed. We had discussed it, but this is the first, with the release of this map, not necessarily tonight, but with the release of this map, is the first time you've seen it mapped. We have the Gateway Area Plan, this is a familiar shape and blazoned in your memory banks forever at this point. And, and then we have this other infill opportunity zone, which surrounds the downtown and the Union Town Shopping Center that you see here. And so the proposal's there is taking various zoning types and going, you know, initially to, you know, there's a residential high density parcel here that has, you know, commercial use on it, so changing that to commercial, and then doing a little bit of upzoning, residential medium to residential high in this area. And again, we'll come back and revisit this when we come and do the infill opportunity zoning here, likely another form-based code at that point. Those are sort of the big rezones that are associated with non-coastal zone. This is amending the underlying base zoning. We do have a few other, you know, smatterings of residential medium to residential high here. There's the public facilities, it was the former plan for a fire station here, they want to sell the property, they feel like it's better used as residential, so we're talking about mirroring the zoning to go from, you know, public facilities to residential very low to match the rest of the area here. Much of this area is actually developed at densities, it probably more closely mirrors residential low density. Just put that out there as a side note. And then, as we were going through this the other day, one of our staff, I can't...
This is Joe.
Joe, Joe Matier, our senior planner, with his keen eye for detail, pointed out that we, we lost a parcel here. So along Buttermilk, there's a proposal, again, these parcels are, some of them are split zoned, some of them are full parcels that are right along, you know, Buttermilk have residential low density zoning for the most part, there are a couple of larger parcels here, but we skipped one, and so we would propose to include this as also being amended from residential very low to residential low density. Again, largely just to match the, the existing zoning and, and the existing build-out. It would allow for a little bit additional build-out of these sites, assuming they're willing to put in the, you know, sewer infrastructure to do so, but, you know, but that, that's another catch that we would suggest that you make. So those are the, you know, the overview of the zoning changes, we don't have anything else down south, that's all, you know, intended to be in, you know, still in ag and, and other residential low density type uses. As you recall from our discussions with the Local Coastal Program Update, there are overlay zones in the coastal zone that we're proposing that would allow some flexibility and sort of shifts in uses in the coastal zone that would overlay these underlying zoning districts. So you won't see those changes in the underlying zoning. For instance, in this strip here on South G Street, H Street, industrial limited, we're not proposing to change that as an underlying zoning. What we're proposing instead is, in the coastal zone, where you would have both zoning districts applicable, is to have an overlay zone that would have other use restrictions, and the more restrictive would apply. So it would theoretically eliminate some uses, but then transition us to uses that we want to see in the future. An example we've used in the past for this is where we have sites that are being used for scrap metal storage right now, and potentially contaminated sites with, you know, old industrial equipment, giving them the allowance for uses like RV Park would incentivize cleaning those sites up, removing all of those contaminants that, you know, are going to be a threat, you know, as sea levels rise, as groundwater's rise, and those sorts of things, and then transition those uses to something that's more adaptable to sea level rise and potentially a higher and better use for that area, and also provide some visitor-serving functions. You're not seeing those here. I only bring that up to, to point out that there are other zoning, zoning changes that we'll talk about in the coastal zoning when we get there. So that's a high-level overview of zoning changes. I wanted to pause real quick before going on and see if there are questions or if there's deliberations about, you know, for instance, changing the commercial general to mixed use in the Valley West area to allow more flexibility there, or any of the other things that we've gone over today. I have a question, Chair.
Yeah, what's the process with the property owners on these changes? Is there some noticing if they disagree with it? Do they have say-so? Or is it just by zone that they happen to be in?
Yeah, there's, there's absolutely noticing to property owners when there's a zone change. The, you know, and, and these zoning changes basically are, you know, citywide, so, you know, typically, you get notice if you're within 500 feet as well. We haven't exactly established the, the noticing that we will go through, but certainly anyone who owns a piece of property that is having a zone change, they'll be notified. I believe we've reached out. Dila, can you address the notification that we've done to date?
Yeah, so I was told not to be too close to the microphone. So our plan, we, we programmed in two hearings for the land use element tonight and an upcoming hearing as well, with the intent of noticing affected property owners between the two hearings and giving them an opportunity to come before the commission, you know, between, between that time, giving us a chance to review this in more in the abstract before property owners come in and, you know, provide the case for their individual, specific sites. But it is a state law requirement to notice all affected property owners of a land use change that would affect their property. So, long story short, we do plan to do it in the next couple of weeks after tonight's hearing.
And that would be above and beyond the legal requirement, because when we come back around to actually make the zoning changes, adopt the ordinance that would implement those, they would receive notice at that time, too, as we're going through the, the legal procedures to do so.
Okay, so can you clarify, this is what I, I was going to ask also. So right now, we're talking about the general land use map with those specific proposed zoning changes. So there is public noticing of affected owners now, and when we review a draft zoning code change, there will be a separate set of public notices and a separate set of public hearings then, right?
Exactly, yeah. The, the notice that we provide now isn't required by law, but the, obviously, the general plan land use designations establish what the zoning, the underlying zoning is going to be, so that it's consistent with that. And so we want to make sure that folks are, are notified now. And again, to my point earlier about the, you know, 500-foot notification, once you cross a threshold of 1,500 notices, you can publish in the paper. When it becomes an area-wide, you know, citywide, you know, hearing essentially, you are allowed legally to provide notice through, you know, through a newspaper publication, as opposed to individual notices to everyone within 500 feet. And so we're still trying to vet through what that would look like, and whether there are means for, you know, providing a broader notice to people about these upcoming changes.
Go ahead, Matt.
Thanks for the tour of the map. You pointed out several areas where you were proposing upzoning to residential high density, and I'm curious if staff considered making those areas mixed use, right? Allowing commercial uses as well as residential, not requiring them necessarily, but, you know, once you build a new residential building and it's residential on the ground floor, it's hard to switch in the future, whereas if you allowed it in the first place, it would be up to developer.
Yeah, I think we did consider expanding commercial mixed uses as broadly as we possibly could. There's almost no... There's almost no Commercial General left after these changes, if they were adopted. The commercial mix just gives a lot more flexibility in terms of those potential uses. Several of these areas, for instance, you know, where the Craftsman's Mall project is, they don't lend well to, just because of circulation patterns and access, they don't lend well to a whole lot of, you know, commercial uses. So having a broad brush on this area and turn it, you know, allowing commercial anywhere may not make a lot of sense for that area. But it is certainly something to consider in terms of, you know, allowing for, you know, neighborhood stores, like maybe something in the residential high-density zoning could say, you know, and it's also okay to have a, you know, corner store in these areas because that does make sense. Some of the other areas where we're going residential high, you know, are already pretty proximal to shopping. And so like this one here has the Westwood Shopping Center immediately adjacent to it. You know, these are going to residential medium. And again, they're within walking distance of, you know, Corner Store and, you know, Murphy's. I would say that, you know, those are kind of the primary reasons why we didn't consider that. But it's certainly something for the commission to deliberate.
Any other commissioners have questions about these proposed zoning changes?
I had a quick question then, David. I'm just wondering specifically, how would the change to commercial mixed specifically increase development opportunities?
Yeah, that's a really good question. Commercial mixed allows for higher densities of residential use over Commercial General. And in addition, you know, as we dig into some of the code language for Commercial Mixed, staff is going to have recommendations for allowing more flexibility than what's currently in the code. Right now, the Commercial Mixed standards require Commercial frontage on the first 75 feet of depth of a lot. So seventy, you have to have a 75-foot-deep storefront on the frontage under Commercial Mixed. And, you know, basically what our experience is in this community is that we just don't have the residential densities to support that much commercial use. We have tons of vacancy in commercial spaces right now. Forcing people to have more commercial space will do one of two things. Either create more vacancy, or it will kill housing projects. And so what we're coming forward with is a recommendation for a lot more flexibility in those Commercial Mixed use zones and some proposed changes to the standards to attempt to allow, you know, additional development. Many of these parcels are very small. And so, you know, you're not going to see, you know, 40, 50, 60-unit developments on them. But right now, you might see a three, four, or five-unit development that goes up on top of one of these existing parcels in the North Town, for example. But they just can't, they just can't swing it because the unit counts are too low, or they just can't swing it because of the Commercial Mixed use requirements for Commercial frontage. I hope that answers your question.
So it would provide a little more flexibility, not only for commercial projects, to perhaps be sized more appropriately, but also increased housing opportunities as well?
Yeah, absolutely. The Mixed Use designation is really intended to provide that mix of commercial and residential uses. Staff has been approached by, you know, several property owners asking to do, you know, either mixed-use or residential projects, and specifically in the North Town. And, you know, we take a look at their project. We say it looks great. It looks like it's trying to, you know, check all the boxes in our, you know, housing goals. But you just can't do it because of the Commercial Mixed use, or because of the Commercial General designation. You just, you won't be able to make those thresholds. We've had folks come forward that, you know, want to do much higher densities than are allowed for, and folks that, you know, quite frankly, just can't meet the standard. So we'll get into more detail on nitty-gritty standards around these different zoning districts. But the idea behind all of these changes really is to create more flexibility in the code.
Thank you. Dan?
Yeah, just for clarity there, David. On Commercial Mixed, did you say that there was 75 feet of depth of commercial space required? And is that something that you also said you're looking at reducing?
Yeah, that's the current standard, except in the Commercial Central, where there are some exceptions for that. And, you know, we'd be proposing changes to those, both in the Commercial Central and in Residential Medium. I'm sorry, Commercial Mixed. Okay. So at some point, I'd like to circle back to this and make sure that these changes are, you know, still in line with what you're envisioning and to make sure that the changes, or to get your input on the changes that we discussed going Commercial Mixed on this Commercial General area and the Buttermilk Lane in particular.
When you say circle back, are you looking for just a straw poll, kind of a conversation here?
That'd be great, yeah, just to make, you know, we can modify the map if the commission wants to, you know, as a whole, you know, as a majority, make those changes.
Go ahead, Matt.
I guess I'm wondering if now would be an appropriate time to talk about additional changes on top of the ones that staff are recommending.
I'm wondering if, as a matter of process, we can conclude the staff report and then move into deliberations? Or something like that, so that we know when the staff report is actually done?
I'm happy either way. I mean, there are kind of three discrete chunks in the staff report. So if you want to deliberate, you know, or have at least some discussion, you know, to get ideas on the table now, that's fine. Or if you want to wait until I'm done, that's fine, too.
Well, what's the best way? I think it does make sense to sort of organically talk about these sections as we cover them and then go back into a staff report for the next section. Does that work?
Sure, yeah, for me it does. It does for you all.
I'd actually like to hear the entire staff report first and then deliberate, simply because I think there's some broader issues that might not fit into just one area of commenting on the staff report that we should have an opportunity to discuss upfront.
Can you give us just a preview of what you're going to cover in the next two sections of the staff report?
Yeah, the second one is the land use element itself. And what I'd propose for that is to go through section by section of the land use element so that we're all on the same page and understand the changes that are being proposed, verify whether or not they address your concerns around that, you know, element or that section of policy, to move through the land use element that way. And then the last piece is that I wanted to just review some of the upcoming information or upcoming meetings that you're having and to check in with our schedule for the table that we developed following the August meeting where the Planning Commission, you know, identified a series of concerns and follow-up actions. We've got all of those follow-up actions planned out for when they're going to occur, and I just want to share that with the commission.
So perhaps what we can do is hear a staff report on the first two items that are going to be sort of perhaps informative on these things and then have deliberations before hearing a staff report on scheduling? How does that sound to everybody? Is that good? Okay, so given that, let's roll into the second portion of the staff report and then we'll give feedback and deliberate on the first two sections before moving into the third. And then also, that might give us an opportunity, depending on timing, to see where we want to make a break to continue if we need to.
David? David, could we get this showing on that screen as well?
Yeah, we'll pull it up on the monitor for sure. We've had some technical challenges. For some reason, the documents that pasted across into the, into the, I can't access it to delete it either. I can't open this, I can't delete it, I can't do anything with it, apparently. So while Delo's getting the land use element reloaded into this file so that we can open it and look at the track changes version, which I think is important because you'd be able to see the changes that were made, maybe I can just go over real quickly the densities that are proposed in the land use element. These aren't pulled into the land use element at this time. But, so, they haven't been modified into the document yet. So what we have here is a table that shows proposed densities for each of the land use designations, and I'll go over those independently. They're listed in terms of their letter designation, what they are in English, the current densities under the general plan 2020, and the proposed change to densities. Now, these will be incorporated into the land use element as, you know, as these changes. And certainly there's, you know, discussion points. We can talk in detail about why we propose these changes and what the changes mean. We also look at the floor area ratio. So the density, max current density, is the number of dwelling units per acre that you can build on site. The floor area ratio is how much of that site the building can take up, including the area of each of its floors. Super simple way to look at this is that if you had a floor area ratio of one, that you would basically be able to, you know, cover the entire site with one floor. Or you could take that entire area and stack it into multiple sites, shrinking the footprint of it by the area necessary to incorporate that entire one-floor area. So something that has a floor area of two, you could have the entire site covered with two floors. Or you could have a higher level covered by more floors. Now, in the land use code, I just want to be real clear. There's nothing that would allow an entire site to be developed on most zoning districts. Commercial, I'm sorry, the Commercial Central, the downtown area is one of the only districts where we say you can cover the entire site with a building. Everywhere else has other land use limitations like setbacks, open space requirements, parking requirements that further limit the site coverage. And so that floor area ratio really just tells you if you're going to go up to that maximum floor area ratio that you would have to do so with multi-story building.
David, what pager do you want?
I'm sorry. Dylan, can you turn the video on? Thank you. Sorry about that, I thought that was, that had happened already. Should have checked on that. So again, just real quickly, Peter, the land use designation in letters, it's spelled out. Dwelling units per acre in current general plan 2020, proposed 2045. That's our upcoming general plan. And then the floor area ratio for current and then proposed. Okay, so-
Hold on, Judith has a question.
Another question on the same issue. So our density in here is presumably it's gross density, right?
Yeah, for the, the land use code is not very clear on what we mean by density.
Okay, so is there any way to make it clear?
There is. Let me just, you know, back up. And this may get a little terse for most people, but just to address your question. We list the density for parcels based on their existing parcel area. So it's the, you know, if it's a, if you're developing an existing parcel, it's the density gross area for that parcel. The only time when net density comes into play is when you're doing a subdivision. And generally speaking, we've set the density at the gross for the original parcel, not the subdivided parcel. And so I-
Okay, yeah.
You get into the weeds real quick with that one, but that's how we would look at it.
So the bigger question, and I think I mentioned this in the comments that I had sent in before, so you've seen it before, is we've had some really important changes in state housing law recently, which, in effect, make the numbers in this dwelling units per acre less meaningful than they would otherwise be. And so I'm wondering if there is a way to address that in the land use element so that we can have a more realistic depiction of the actual maximum number of dwelling units that would be allowed in these various zoning districts. And the reason that I'm saying that is, under the new state law, somewhere along the line, Arcata's going to need to deal with the idea that something that is now zoned for a single dwelling unit at some point in the future could in fact have six. And I would love some language and some charts and some numbers in our land use code to acknowledge that change and to allow us to deal realistically with a new concept of density. And I'm, there's no acknowledgement whatsoever in this language of those changes. And it is going to be 2023 and 2024 and 2045 pretty soon. So is there a draft change that you've got in the works to do that?
Yes, and I think that's a really good point. We currently don't have anything in the land use element. That's a good place to house some discussion about this. We do plan to bring to the Planning Commission in a meeting near you soon, a discussion around, you know, that broader context, Housing Accountability Act, Density Bonus Law. AB 2011, I don't know if you recall me talking to you about this late last year. It was signed by the governor recently. And so, yeah, there's a host of different laws that are coming from the state that are really driving, number one, density, and number two, less discretionary review, more objective design standard kind of processes. So I think it's important to understand those. When we get to that, I'm not prepared to go into detail about it tonight. But when we get to that meeting, I will certainly bring back how that could be reflected, you know, in a tabular format about what the maximums would be in each of those scenarios. I don't think it would necessarily be productive to print the entire density bonus table because it's probably 50 rows deep and like 30 columns wide. I mean, it's, you know, it exploded. But we can give some sense as to what the maximum densities would be under each of those scenarios.
Are you saying that these numbers we see here are going to be contrary to state law?
Yes.
I don't think they're contrary to state law necessarily, not to disagree. But I think that the state law is an overlay, and each of the different state laws intersects with our density in different ways. For instance, the Density Bonus Law would take the base density that's allowed for in the zone and then allow for an increase in that density if the developer provides a certain amount, a certain proportion of affordable housing. And so you would, these numbers are not contrary to that. They give a starting point. And so I think part of the issue that Commissioner Mayer is raising here is that you need to be able to look at, you know, both what we think the maximum density should be with respect to, you know, our local land use element, our local zoning, as well as the layering that could happen with these, you know, potential housing-related bills that are coming out. So they're not contrary, they're not in conflict with one another. The state is basically additive when it comes to density bonus. There are other measures like AB 2011 that I mentioned just now where essentially what it says is if a development meets, you know, specific criteria and standards, then it's principally permitted in any zoning district that allows for commercial, retail, or parking as a principally permitted activity. And so there's an area where, you know, on this table, we may not have anything that indicates a density, but state law supersedes our local law and says that you're going to allow for housing development on those sites. And it can go up to, you know, it specifies in state law what the density limits are. And so there's just, there's a lot of, a lot of change, changes that have happened over the last, say, five years in housing law that affect our decisions.
Dan?
Yeah, briefly. I see the maximum at residential high at 32 units per acre. Is, what's the maximum density that has to date been built in Arcata?
I'm sorry, the maximum density what?
That has been built to date in Arcata? Do we have anything at 32 units per acre?
Well, for, I don't have the numbers on the top of my head, but I can tell you that there are many projects that I've gone back and tried to reverse calculate how they got to the densities they got to. And they far exceed any density that we've ever had as a base- as a, a baseline in Arcata. So, I'm not sure what the history on those approvals were. It could be that they, um, you know, subdivided and based the density on, you know, the original gross areas. We were just talking earlier. Um, many projects come in, uh, with, uh, we've had projects come in with a density bonus, uh, previously. Um, so, you'll see those at higher densities than thirty-two. And almost every project has either come in at, um, the maximum or over the maximum, uh, as, as an initial request, either through a planned development permit, or, um, uh, we have an example on Foster, uh, the, the Trimmer project, where there was a special consideration for that site, where it could have a higher density if they were one-bedroom units. So, we have a lot of examples where we have much higher densities than, than thirty-two units per acre.
Thank you.
I, that new development on Seventh Street, I forget its name.
Sorrel?
Yeah. Um, isn't that, it, I mean, that's a fraction of an acre, and how many units are there?
Yeah, that one's forty-four. That's a, a good example where, you know, we have much higher density, and, uh, we might be able to calculate the exact density for you, but, um, uh, it's forty-four, forty-four units total, and I believe it's a third of an acre. It's about a third of an acre.
So, that's way more than that table shows.
Correct.
Well, and Joe has a salient fun fact about history of density, if, if he may share that.
Arcata, when it was developed, didn't have any density for, uh, many portions. And I, I don't know when we started adding the density, but I'd imagine probably the late seventies, eighties. But there was, uh, quite a few sites where David had mentioned that, uh, you know, you look at those calculations, you're like, wow, that doesn't meet any near our code, but they were developed at that time to meet the code. And then I think the Westwood Garden that the commission just, uh, recently reviewed was developed at that thirty-two, um, acre, or thirty-two units per acre.
You're saying some of those older, what, legacy projects were permitted before the density cap was put into the building code?
Yes, uh, there's a number of multifamily residential structures that you see in the Bayview Neighborhood Conservation Area, and then as you go up in the North Town area, um, uh, where we have these multifamily structures. And, uh, they're spread out, oh, throughout town and stuff, and they're at a higher density than we would've. And I did research it back, and I was like, wow, I wonder where they got that density. And it, specifically in the staff report, uh, the, there was no density at that time.
Thank you.
So, how does a project get approved that is far greater than the maximum density allowed?
Well, uh, Sorrel Place, uh, the example you used, uh, there's actually no density maximum. So, Sorrel Place is in the commercial central here. Um, oops, sorry, I didn't highlight the correct one. Commercial Central currently has no maximum density, uh, and it uses the building height, you know, and other, uh, development standards to, to regulate the, the maximum density. Um, so, Sorrel Place could have been, uh, you know, sixty units if they had made smaller units, um, because they, they maximized the development, um, framework. They couldn't build any bigger than they did without special consideration. In fact, I think on that one, they did have a minor use permit for height, because, um, they were maybe a few feet over it. Uh, details, details, getting lost in the weeds, sorry. So, Commercial Central has much, uh, you know, has no, no density maximum, uh, just has other limitations. Um, so, you see each of the zoning districts were proposing to increase the density. Um, each of these has, you know, uh, different reasons. Commercial General, for example, at fifteen dwelling units per acre, um, you know, you're, you're finding that projects just aren't, uh, really developable. Uh, we're not having a lot of those come in, uh, to my knowledge, none. Um, Commercial Mixed Use and, uh, the high-density zoning districts, we're proposing to, you know, upzone to, you know, fifty units per acre, which is in line with, uh, you know, many other, uh, you know, cities, less than a lot of other cities, but, you know, we think is, is doable within our, our, um, you know, development potential. And these are really the, the districts, you know, residential high density, residential medium density, and commercial mixed, where we would s- expect to see, you know, the highest rates of increases in multifamily development throughout the city. Um, the balance of that development will be, you know, in smaller, uh, you know, uh, you know, ADU development and/or, you know, SB nine subdivisions within the, uh, you know, uh, single-family residential.
Sorry, I, I have to come back to this. If, if indeed there were forty-four units in a third of an acre-
Mm-hmm.
That's like three times the maximum density that is allowed there under high density.
Mm-hmm.
So, is that number too low?
I mean, that's certainly for the commission to deliberate, and I think it would be important information to see, um, what we are, you know, up against if developers do come in and start using, you know, SB thirty-five, or, you know, density bonus law, or some of these other housing laws that, uh, provide a little bit more control over, you know, what the, the development framework is, how many units they can build, and what that process looks like. Um, you know, we set these as, you know, sort of an incremental increase in, um, in density, sort of on the low end of, uh, you know, what, uh, we felt like the, you know, the, the development potential would be for these different districts. Um, it's still, you know, a fairly aggressive, uh, increase in the potential for, for development throughout the city. Um, so, um, you know, I think that, you know, it would be the staff recommendation, but we're open to, you know, your deliberations.
It seems to me if we're trying to build housing and get people housed, that that development, sorrel development, um, is certainly, I, I think e- everyone would think that that wasn't an outrageously dense, uh, development, and yet, the number doesn't correspond at all to the number on that chart. So, maybe we need a much higher number.
Well, I mean, it does co- correspond in the sense that there's no limit in that commercial central zoning area. So-
Yeah, but we're, I'm looking at the high-density number, which is fifty, and that development is about a hundred and thirty.
I'm, I'm just wondering if, if what we're hearing here is actually a request for the land use element to include some discussion of a realistic, actual, um, density taking into account, um, the many different levels of additional, um, in, in intensities that could be built in here instead of a simple chart, which, which really under-represents, I think, the actual densities that we would expect to see in the actual intensities of development that would probably, um, be allowed based on various kinds of modifications responding to state laws. So, right now, the land use element doesn't actually even mention any of those. And maybe in the next draft that we review, it could. And that, you know, fifty-deep chart, although it would be really hard to print, um, is probably something that the commission should be able to consider when we're actually setting numbers later on, where, when we're considering the zoning code. Um, it, it doesn't necessarily come in at the plan stage, but at the zoning, the land use code revision stage. Um, so, ju- just some mention to explain that, you know, what you see is not what you get, um, would really help in the land use element that we're going to eventually approve. That, that, that would go a long way.
Yeah, I think, um, like I mentioned earlier, it's a great change. We'll definitely, you know, I'm seeing nodding heads, we'll definitely bring that back.
Yeah, I mean, I think as long as you can make a mention to the fact that this is, these are the sort of density maxims that we're proposing with the sort of general caveat that with changes at the state level, things may be different. Or, I don't know how you would write that, but-
Yeah, I think a more specific caveat would be what we're looking for.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, be- because much of this is quite unrealistic. And, you know, we should be able to know, well, okay, if you're changing the intensity of the use, but we're keeping the maximum floor area ratio the same, um, what does that mean? It means you're going up. And, um, I, or, we don't know what it means. So, some discussion of that in the element would, would be super, super helpful, I think, to the general public, and at least certainly to me.
Other commissioners have an opinion on that piece?
It just sounds like you're on the right track with getting that wording in there.
Okay.
State law will change, we know that.
Commissioner Tagney made my point, uh, which is that, you know, these, all these state laws are new, and they'll keep, get new ones. They might scale some back that are getting a lot of pushback right now, potentially. Um, and so, when we're deciding these, I think it's helpful to have that information for right now. But I also think we might just want to set a baseline that's where we think we need to be for 2045, right? And so, staff has made their recommendation. I agreed with you that it seemed a little low, um, given where we're currently already building. Uh, but, you know.
Yeah, okay, well, we will, uh, bring that back for further discussion with some, um, uh, you know, description of the various state housing law and how density might be impacted by those. And then you can make a decision about how you incorporate that into, uh, the land use element.
David, I got one more question in regards of that table, and also was presented, um, in exhibit thirteen, but I think the number is all messed up, um, on all the exhibits I find. Um, in respect to proposed max density for the gateway area, is that going to be just carried on to the gateway area plan, or is it going to be introduced in the, in this component and then referencing the gateway area plan in regards of populating that information and, and understanding that information?
Yeah, no, I think the idea is to, um, allow the gateway area plan, which is a standalone element, to, you know, contain all of that information. That's a really good question. That's why in this table, we put not applicable. Um, you know, because we're, we're not addressing it in this table. That's what we were intending to do. Um, I wanted to point out, uh, as well to, uh, the commission that, you know, at this point, um, you know, the industrial, agricultural, and residential low-density, uh, floor area ratios are not proposed to change. Um, but in these higher-density areas where you have, you know, residential high, residential medium, currently there is no max far, and we're proposing to keep that, no max far. Uh, but these other areas where there's commercial central, commercial general, um, and commercial mixed, the idea is to eliminate the floor area ratio in here and use other development standards like height and, you know, things that are, you know, easily measured and, uh, uh, easy to, to regulate, uh, to, uh, regulate the maximum floor area. Okay. Transition to drumroll, see if this works. Okay. Dilo has the magic touch tonight, apparently. Everything I put into the file will not open. Everything she puts into the file works flawlessly. Okay, so, um, I'm going to pull this up. I've got, again, we've got the, the printout that we've had a couple of times before. If you're looking at the electronic version, the page numbers don't match up, uh, with the, the page numbers that are referenced in the printed version. So, to keep us all on the same page, if you will reference the section numbers, uh, that'll help us, uh, communicate more effectively. Got the land use el- uh, element up on the screen here with the, um, the track changes version. Um, I did note in going through this earlier that there was a change in, uh, at least one portion of this document, uh, that was a change to the changed version, and it shows up as a track change. So, I want to acknowledge that there's at least one instance in this document, we're going to clean this up, but there's at least one instance in this document where the change that's shown here is not a change from the 2020 general plan. We're going to clean that up. I just wanted to throw that out in case anybody picked up on it, and they're like, aha! There's no ahahs here. It was a human mistake. Happened three times. We've already done that part. Thank you, Dilo. Appreciate you jumping on that. So, we'll try and point those out as we go through these. Uh, but again, I, I wanted to, you know, kind of fly through the introduction and then start digging into more substantive, the, the policy areas, uh, make sure that we're all tracking on them. And if you have recommendations that we need to track chain, uh, take notes on as we go through those, um, then we'll do that. So, again, updating the introduction just to sort of identify some, uh, new things that we see in our community, uh, as well as, uh, trying to update the, uh, you know, the discussions around the activity centers that, uh, we're seeing. Um, if you have comments on this, we'd be happy to go back and look at that again. But we, uh, in following suit, go through the same sort of neighborhood descriptions that we did before, but instead of neighborhoods, we're looking at these act, as activity areas or activity centers. Um, and this was based in part, and maybe Dilo, you can describe a little bit about where this came from?
Yeah, so, uh, internally, we had two, two versions of this document, and that's why there were some of these sections, um, strikeout sections, because that constitutes a reorganization of, of the original draft. Um, one version kept more to the structure of the original element from twenty years ago, but the one that we decided to bring before you restructures the document to focus more, um, on this idea of increasing investment around existing activity centers. And that's something that actually is already, um, pretty clearly the main focus of the growth management element and the land use element from the 2020 version. Uh, but we're just trying to reinforce it. Again, the idea being, uh, we want to increase activity, um, and the ability for multimodal, um, transportation networks and connectivity between areas where there's already existing activity and density. Um, and this was an idea that actually came from, um, a partner, Change Labs Solutions out of Oakland. They had partnered with us to draft our health element, which is one of the last, will be coming before the commission. Um, and they also had gone through the other elements of the general plan, just super broad brush, looking for other ways for us to basically build, um, health and equity into our planning. And this was one of their key recommendations was, uh, instead of having just, you know, different land uses, really think about how we want to, um, you know, bring people together and invest in already invested areas and focus on the neighborhoods and build backward from there. So, their suggestion was to, you know, structure, restructure the document to focus more on the pattern of development, uh, which we have done by putting a lot of the content from other sections, other subsections of this document into the first section, uh, titling it "Pattern of Development" and trying to, um, basically make clear what our, what our development philosophy is. So, there is, um, a, a nice section that David just went through that really focuses in on that. Um, if you just scroll up, David, really quickly, it's, um, yeah, basically just this section right here, um, which is "By recognizing and valuing the diversity of existing neighborhoods and prioritizing existing place-based strengths, the city can support the development of more connected and vibrant communities and ultimately grow a more equitable, prosperous, and resilient region by targeting the places with the most potential to have a transformative impact on community and city prosperity." So, if you haven't read that section, I feel like it pretty clearly outlines our thinking on there. Um, and hopefully, you know, the commission and council will agree that the intent is really just to double down on the existing philosophy, um, and we're not really trying to break new ground. We're just trying to make our message more clearly communicated.
Thanks, Dilo. Um, okay, so, within the activity, uh, centers, uh, we talk about, you know, the existing ones, but then we also bring in this concept of the infill opportunity zones that were identified in the housing element, and then, uh, including the gateway area.
Well, one of the things that, um, could really confuse the public is by calling these activity infill opportunity zones rather than areas or centers or something like that. Um, it's, it's, especially if you're not sitting here where we are reading Um, it's, it's, especially if you're not sitting here where we are reading tons of documents, when you say zone, you think zoning. So if there's some way of consistently identifying those with, um, another term than zones, that would be super helpful, I think. You've called them activity centers, you've called them infill opportunity areas in some places, but as soon as you say zones, somebody is looking for a zoning map.
Yeah, the, the, I mean, certainly if the commission wants to change the name, you can, we, that's what they're called in the housing element, um, in terms of the infill zones, the infill zones are a subset of activity centers. Um, the activity centers include our, um, you know, more traditional, what we traditionally refer to as neighborhoods. So, yeah, certainly if the commission wants to change that, that seems simple.
Yeah, and maybe there's an opportunity to put that on the list of things that should change in the next amendment to the housing element as well, um, because it was already confusing there.
Okay. Add that to the list of straw poll items. Uh, so the land use map, we went over that, this is the section where it's embedded. Uh, we also looked, last time we went over growth management, at the difference between the planning area, the stark outline, which encompasses the entire watershed and the city of Arcata. Um, this also shows some urban services boundaries, so some duplication there in terms of that mapping. Um, but then we get into, uh, you know, guiding principles and goals, uh, first one we added was to really highlight at the, you know, front and center that we're trying to create, uh, welcoming, safe, and racially equitable community, um, you know, our commitment to racial equity, uh, we're trying to ensure is identified and addressed throughout the document, so that these goals largely are unchanged with, you know, minor, minor wording changes. Um, the infill development goal was, uh, sort of, we doubled down on this to identify these, uh, infill opportunity zones, uh, as a way to encourage these high-density, density residential developments. Um, and other than that, the goals are unchanged. Does anybody have comments on the, the goals?
Um, I, they're all really laudable goals, but I would just point out that in doing this revision of the general plan, we have yet to take a look at the, um, overarching vision for the general plan, and typically that would come first. Um, could be that our 22-year-old vision is just fine, um, but we've never discussed it. Um, and I, I think that that's something that we need to talk about as soon as possible, before we lock in policy changes and more specific element-by-element, um, guiding principles. So, um, we might also wanna talk about the order in which these principles are, are stated in the document, that that, you know, that's a little bit more trivial. I, I don't, I don't know, I don't know if all of us have even read those guiding principles or the overarching vision for the general plan, um, that was adopted in the year 2000, but those are the overarching principles that these are supposed to respond to, we've never talked about them.
I did take a look at it once you mentioned it in your, uh, in your notes, you know, um, commenting on this land use, uh, element, and I think it's definitely something we should reflect on as a commission to, as a guiding, you know, as a guiding document, as a guiding tool in regards of what our outcomes are on this one.
Yeah, so, um, we are hoping to bring it to the next, um, meeting, or at least the next meeting where we discuss the land use element. As far as I know, we're not proposing any significant changes to it, we did include, um, a survey, a vision survey many, many, many moons ago, it now feels like, we had about 500 people take that survey, and the general consensus was our existing vision statement was pretty spot-on. There were a couple of things that people wanted to, um, see altered or changed, you know, the McKinley statue, take that out of the vision statement, um, and stuff like that, but generally speaking, you'll be given potentially a couple of options, one would be, again, a reorganization, but the content would likely be very similar, and there is a bit more, um, you know, analysis of the survey results in the existing draft of the community, um, engagement report, which is available online if you wanna check that out.
Thanks, it would, it would be great to talk about it sooner rather than later.
Yeah, I think, uh, next, next meeting is when we intend to bring it. Um, okay, so then we start jumping into the policy, the way it's structured, we start with, uh, overall development, uh, pattern. Um, I'm not planning on reading these to you, um, some of this significant strikeout is just because it was reorganized, so we'll, we'll get to that, uh, we didn't just kill all these policies. Uh, but again, the, uh, the emphasis here is on infill development, um, I think that, you know, the, you know, again, the, the vision for the community has historically been and probably continues to be to emphasize infill over, uh, expanding out onto the bottoms, although I do wanna recognize, we have heard that from a couple of community members. Um, and so, um, all of these policies were moved down, we'll get to them when we get there, but, uh, protecting, uh, uh, natural resources, NAG lands, um, this is really about the AE and NR designations, a little bit of polishing there, not much change. Promotion of infill development, again, trying to, you know, be consistent with the, the rest of the work that we're doing on, you know, the infill work, um, including these infill opportunity zones, uh, that we identify in LUA, that's the map we were just looking at with the land use changes. Um, and these, uh, are the policies that pulled down, prioritization of transit, streamlined review, yep?
Um, well, I guess I can let you.
Okay, yeah, um, yeah, these, these are all existing policies with minor, minor changes, they just were reorganized, variety of industrial uses, um, activity areas diagram. Um, feeling like there's not a lot of groundbreaking stuff in this body of policy, it's really just trying to identify the activity centers, so is there comments on this section or discussion you wanna have?
As long as you're asking, um, that policy LU1D with regard to...
D as in dog?
As in dog. Um, with regard to the ministerial review or streamlined review, you're referring to the infill opportunity zones or whatever we're gonna end up calling them. Um, so, we've already had a, a lot of discussion about this with regard to the gateway without ever actually, um, figuring out exactly what the ministerial or streamlined review would be, and I think before we adopt this policy, we need to have those discussions. Um, if we can't even have them with regard to the gateway, um, I don't know that we should have them with regard to all of the other infill areas within the city, so I, I would really hope we would have that discussion sooner rather than later as well, and definitely before we recommend, um, adopting this element.
Yeah, I think, um, this goes, that's, that's really good that you flagged that for this particular policy, I think this goes into the bucket of, you know, we've got all of these different pieces and parts, and we can only look at one at a time, and then when we get to the end, we're gonna have to look at the whole thing over again and say, well, we made these critical decision points and those critical paths changed these documents, and we'll go back and fix those, so, good call.
Um, policy LU1C, uh, calls for reducing or eliminating minimum parking requirements in areas where walking or biking is frequent and/or it's anticipated, anticipated to be higher. I think we sort of want that to be all areas of the city, uh, or at least I do, um, and so I would be interested in look, having a policy of reducing or eliminating minimum parking requirements everywhere. Um, people can still build parking, right? I'm not saying that it's not allowed, I'm just saying that the city doesn't need to be mandating parking for private vehicles in all areas of the city.
I agree with that.
So do I.
Anybody else care to weigh in on that piece?
I have a, a clarification along those lines, I've seen some developments, regardless of how much parking, uh, recent developments, uh, how much parking they provided, that, um, there wasn't any particular landscape plan associated with the project, and then people just parked everywhere, all over what you would think would be yards or lawns or some kind of landscape, and it really is a, a bad look, and, uh, so there's kinda two, two problems here, one is that there's too damn many cars, which we want to reduce for a variety of reasons, and the other is that when those cars don't wanna park, park down the street on public, um, street frontage, they just park all over the yard, and it looks like crap to everybody, I mean, it really looks unsightly and chaotic and, uh, unplanned, I don't imagine any, but, in fact, I know when those projects went through us, I assumed there was a landscaping plan, I don't remember, but it sure wasn't the way it looks now. Uh, 27th Street is where I'm actually, I just see it a lot, I have a friend down that street and I go there a lot. Uh, anyway, so, you know, i- it's a tough balance. Yeah. It's a tough topic.
Yeah, unintended consequences.
Okay, so, um, I am, uh, not hearing a, you know, majority of folks that wanna, you know, change this policy at this point, but it sounds like maybe this is something to come back to, so we'll revisit, maybe we'll try and, you know, develop some, some language that, uh, you know, better reflects the intent, um, I think, you know, Commissioner Simmons' point about, uh, we want all areas in the city to have walking and biking as frequent activities.
I, I just wanted to bring up, um, a reminder that this is the land use settlement, it's not actually the zoning code, um, and the, and the zoning or land use code can become much more stringent and much more specific than this, which would be an overarching policy, um, for areas of the entire city, so, um, it, it's entirely possible to adopt this policy without necessarily, um, completely eliminating parking requirements, um, in, in some areas further than the half a mile away from the major bus stop. Um, so I'm, 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 I don't have super strong feelings about this language either way, I think that the, the crucial moment is what is gonna be in the zoning code.
Yeah, I think the intent is there, you know, reduce or eliminate, so, you know, I guess we can flush things out when it comes down to the zoning code, I feel the, the essence is, you know, it's, it's established.
But still, it would be useful to say all areas of the city, not just areas.
I guess it's not clear to me why we wouldn't want all areas of the city to encourage or provide for biking, et cetera.
I think the intent here is to recognize that some portions of the city are, um, you know, less accessible, I think, well, the language is not great, you know, looking at it with fresh eyes and the benefit of this discussion, I'll, I'll, you know, grant the language is not great, but the intent here was to, you know, reduce or eliminate parking requirements, minimum parking requirements in sort of the core areas of the city where you're gonna have transit, you're gonna have trails, all those kinds of things, uh, and I think to Commissioner Simmons' point, a developer could still choose to build up to the maximum parking amount, whatever that happened to be, but we're just not requiring them to put parking in. I think to Commissioner Tagney's point, uh, that particular project was sort of a indicator that the zoning types that we have were the wrong zoning types, uh, we required, uh, single-family housing to be built on those sites, and what the market need was, was for multifamily housing, so you have a bunch of individual adults co-housing at that location, and there's clearly not enough parking for, for what they have. We also have a little bit of a chicken and egg scenario with all of these ambitious, um, uh, alternative transportation policies that we wanna put in place, if we don't set the vision, if we don't set the policy, we're never gonna get there, if we don't set the goalpost, we're never gonna get to that goalpost, but there's a rough transition between having a very car-centric community that doesn't have robust transit, uh, needs met, uh, to, you know, one that is a community of the future that has, you know, more modes available that makes it less necessary to own, uh, your, your personal car. So I think that's what this is trying to get at, and I think we can clean the language up a little bit better, and, um, I think to Commissioner Mayor's point, you know, we can have a policy that indicates a direction we wanna go and then finesse it in the zoning code.
I think that would be better.
Can I get four nods for that, or for that kind of approach?
Yeah, but at minimum, what if we just eliminated including within a quarter to half mile of highly-used transit stops?
Mm-hmm, yeah, I think that needs to be, uh, eliminated because highly-used transit stops are going to change over time.
Yeah.
And, once you've built the parking, it's built.
Yeah, it's, it's a little ambiguous.
Any other things in the general section here that are coming to mind? And I have to apologize, I said earlier that these policies were pulled down from above, and I'm seeing some that were actually new policies, like the one we just discussed.
Um, there, there was another thing, um, in the plaza section, which was LU1I as in internet, maintain Arcata's plaza area as a major community center, um, it would be great to also mention that, um, it is a designated historic, what is the designation? Historic district, historic, whatever, um, 'cause that's gonna signal to people who read the plan that, oh, you need to look for the historic preservation policies too.
Okay, so you're suggesting we leave a breadcrumb to the, um, historic element?
Um, a breadcrumb, what a great expression, yes. Put, put that in the glossary, breadcrumb.
Okay. I think we can do that.
A breadcrumb hyperlink.
Yeah, we have the hyperlink. Um, we, we have generally tried to keep policies, uh, ref- policy references to a minimum because each one stands on its own, and then each time you do an amendment, it's hard to track back and find them all, but, um, I, I do think that, you know, that's a, probably a big enough one to, um, to track in this, this section as well as the historic section.
And as long as we're there, we're at LU1J as in jaywalking, um, encourage Valley West growth as a major community center for North Arcata, um, and then there's all this stuff about Carlson Park and, and, um, commercial stuff, and, um, oh yeah, a lot of Valley West on the west side is basically residential at this point, between the two, um, motel conversions that are permanent and the additional two motel conversions that are supposedly temporary, um, and, and, and a, and a city park that's basically not usable as a city park, um, at this point because of, um, ru- ruthless residents. It, it would be, it would be good to have a fairly, uh, realistic depiction of the residential reality of that area, um, at the moment and going forward, or, or just some indication, um, of its current status rather than its, uh, aspirations alone.
Yeah, I agree, and I think that was one of the reasons why we decided to, uh, propose a rezone, you know, commercial visitor serving doesn't really represent the neighborhood that Valley West really is, like, I think we need to do more to make it a livable neighborhood for the very many people that already call it home, and the... for the very many people that already call it home and the people that will when we capitalize on the infill opportunity area that's, that's designated for it. So that's definitely the intent and we would welcome any other ways to, you know, highlight and celebrate the neighborhood that it is and that it is becoming.
Right, moving on to some of these topics here. We've got, again, the land use plan diagram, which is referenced L U B. It's the one that shows the city boundary in the planning area. It just talks a little bit about how that's interpreted. Gateway, as mentioned here, draws your attention to the gateway area plan, which will be an element of the general plan. And similarly, the local, the coastal land use plan or the local coastal element will be housed in a different document, but referenced here.
Is there any way to put a breadcrumb in that, I guess it's L U one P, the coastal land use plan, that would actually include some note of the areas that are under the city's development permit jurisdiction versus the state's? I know it's, I know it's going to be in the local coastal program, coastal land use element, but it would help to have some reference to it here too.
Again, it's, it's possible to do that. I would recommend against it because the, well, for a couple of reasons. One, we're trying to keep references for the L C P to a minimum in the rest of the document so that it's clear what's certified and what isn't certified. And the L C P could theoretically have, you know, breadcrumbs in almost every element because it has overlapping jurisdiction with every zone type and, and activity type. So I would recommend against it, but if the commission feels strongly that you want to see these breadcrumbs throughout the document, we can work to implement those.
Judith, are you talking about the, where the state retained its jurisdiction versus the city, city jurisdiction?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and, and the reason I think it's important is, is that the city has considerably less land use regulatory control in those areas. And, and one of the other things that I had suggested somewhere in this land use element to also include a map of areas within the city of Arcata's multiple boundaries where the city does not have regulatory control. In other words, where the state or federal government has control of those decisions and especially Cal Poly's land. And there, there are a couple of, I think there's a couple of federal areas, but also the, the state jurisdiction. I don't know who owns the Redwood Sciences Lab and the, you know, the research station and stuff like that. But for sure, at least the, the Cal Poly land, it would be great to have a map of those areas where the city of Arcata has limited land use control or none at all.
Okay, so then the land use plan categories is pretty self-explanatory. It's just showing the acres and percent for each of these different designations. It's shown on the pie chart above. I'm not sure if we need both a pie chart and a table, but that's what we have.
I think the table breaks it down by more categories, right?
It does.
Yeah, that was helpful for me. So I appreciate the table.
Okay, great. The next section, L U two goes into residential land use and dives into more detail here. Again, some minor changes to wording here just to set the, to cue the stage. Not many changes. Here, till we get to residential high where we, you know, just kind of changed the language a little bit to reflect the multifamily housing is located in proximity to commercial employment uses. I think most are, but.
Judith, go ahead.
Is this someplace where we can at least address some of the state housing law changes to at least recognize that they will influence how our policies are operating on the ground? Because here, it, it's just not there at all. It's, it's not even mentioned.
This might be more of a question for the city attorney, but I'm, I'm wondering if there's any concern that building into the code, like, language about state housing law and saying, you know, we're saying our density is this, but our real density is this because of state housing law is a concern. And if we want to sort of maybe avoid that. And so I, I don't know. I'm just flagging it as a potential issue.
Yeah, no, I think we can be, we can show those illustrative, you know, tables. They wouldn't be intended to be regulatory. The challenge with, you know, both that concept and the concept of showing, you know, other areas that aren't under our regulation that are owned by other, you know, entities, of course, is that those things are going to change over time. So it's kind of a static snapshot of what was the case at the time the, the document was adopted. With the direction that the state is going and based on the joint senate and assembly housing panel that I sat on today, I have a strong feeling that the state's going to continue to ramp up its efforts and I wouldn't doubt it if we see increased density bonus in the future. So it'll continually change. But, you know, I do think to your question, again, I think it's good to be able to indicate to that so that we're clear now and the future that, you know, these densities are the base densities. They could be modified by these different state laws. We'll have to think about where that fits in the organization because it not only applies to residential properties, it applies to almost any property at this point. So we'll, we'll certainly think about that.
Maybe that can be in some of the upfront material and that map of areas where the city's regulatory authority is limited, could be under existing conditions.
Yeah, we'll, we'll bring a proposal with some content and, and have you weigh in on it. Because in some ways, I think, you know, just like our housing element has an appendix and the appendix is, you know, full of, you know, background information that, you know, led to the decision, kind of supports the decision. That might be a way to, to frame this, but I'll have to, I'll have to study it.
One other thing that I don't think necessarily fully speaks to this conversation, but in the residential land use classifications table where we are providing density, base density ranges, we did include a footnote that basically reads, density does not include additional density allowed by state ADU or density bonus law. And, you know, that's obviously very, you know, short and not very descriptive, but the intent was to speak to that in some way and we couldn't try and flesh that out.
Good footnote.
Okay. Whoops. Yeah.
So, policy L U two, the objective section, talks about established neighborhood character. And I'm probably stepping on like the third rail of planning commission-ness, but the concept of neighborhood character is pretty subjective in my opinion and then can also be used as a bit of a dog whistle, right? When, when changes are happening that a community doesn't want. And I totally get what this is trying to connote, but I, I don't know that it's like the right language for Arcata. And I just wanted to find that and maybe see if other commissioners have thoughts.
What are your specific concerns there, Matt?
Well, I think there are a lot of communities that use the concept of neighborhood character to prevent any increased density that would allow people of different income levels to move into an area or people of different racial backgrounds, right? When you, when you freeze a neighborhood a certain way, you're also sort of have a tendency to freeze who can live there. And, you know, especially with the history of redlining and single-family zoning being used both for racist and classist reasons, you know, I, I think neighborhood character, when you're just talking about like, oh, the pleasant buildings is one thing, but then neighborhood character, when you're talking about like density levels or who can live there or anything like that is, is more problematic. And then those two things can kind of bleed into each other and, and one can be used to justify the other. I, 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 yeah, I wanted to just start a conversation about it.
Do you have a specific proposal behind that? Or is there, is there something that you're edging towards there with that concern or just a more general sense that it might be problematic moving forward?
Hey, can you just tell me which policy you're talking about? Again, I didn't hear that.
Yeah, so it's, it's in the objective section under policy L U two. And, and my proposal would be to just delete that language, but I realize that not everyone might agree with me.
Your, your concern is the portion that speaks to, quote, established neighborhood character specifically?
Yeah, or compatible with established neighborhood character because it's, it's sort of, it's language that is encouraging not to change things, right? When so much of what we've been talking about is how we need to change and grow, right? And, and so there's, there's tension in that language with what we're doing and what we've all said we intend to do.
So would, for that objective, you, would you propose to keep the language up through preservation and conversion and get rid of that is compatible with established neighborhood character? Or would you propose a different language entirely with regard to a mix of housing types?
I would propose to get rid of that language, but I'm happy to hear other friendly amendments to that proposal.
It's interesting because throughout planning and when in there used to be design review and then it got turned over to us, often there was this neighborhood compatibility topic and often neighbors would get up and speak at the dais and say, this just doesn't fit in. And, and it's been a challenge sometimes. And that kind of falls into that, I so get where you're going here though. And if neighborhood character, well, and it's not very often that we struggle with this neighborhood compatibility. It's a pretty rare conversation around here anymore. So if, if just dropping that, I, I guess the question would be, how does this serve us? To have that phrase in there, does it serve us in any way to do what we need to do up here?
When I was on the Design Assistance Committee many years ago, we were planning the Stewart School subdivision and neighborhood character was a big deal in planning that subdivision. And indeed, the houses that got built were of a certain character that fit very well. But that said, you know, so it, I guess I'm saying it served a good end in that, in that instance. But I agree with what you said. I, I would be happy to strike it.
I appreciate the sentiment that you're getting at, Matt. I think one of my concerns is that it seems to me that one of our goals with form-based code, whether it be vis a vis like perhaps the Creamery District, is to do just that thing, which is to allow for development that specifically keeps in mind compatibility with the established neighborhood character in some way to allow for development that will flow with, echo, work with, for example, the Creamery District. And I'm not sure if we erode that effort by striking that language.
If I could make a, a observation, I'm, you know, tracking both, both conversations or both sides of this conversation and it could be that if you change the language from, that is compatible with established neighborhood character to something along the lines of, you know, that's consistent with, you know, identified design elements or something to that extent, because then you're allowing for transition. I mean, that, that has always been the concern about what, what is neighborhood character? Is it that building? Is it this building? Is it all of the buildings? Is it, you know, which building is it? You know, and each person has their subjective opinion about which building it is. And I agree with Commissioner Simmons 100% that oftentimes these neighborhood compatibility and neighborhood character, you know, concepts sort of elevated out of a lot of the, you know, the racial discrimination that happened in housing policy in the, you know, 50s and 60s. And so, and, and before. And so I think, you know, to address that, I think one of our primary goals in, in this, in this update is to address racial equity. And to the extent that, you know, this is, as Commissioner Simmons put it, a, you know, dog whistle, you know, I think we can eliminate that and say what we really mean. I think, Chair, you said it appropriately.
Yeah, I think I totally agree regarding the racial component and, and the abusive use of that kind of, I just, as long as we can alter it or change it in some way that doesn't erode our effort to apply form-based code to get new development that works with, echoes existing kind of neighborhood character, I think I'm totally fine with that.
Yeah, I think, I think some of the language that David just said could probably work. And I think, you know, a new development can have character without necessarily having to fit into like a cookie cutter copy of existing character, right?
Staff will work on a revision there, David?
Yeah, I mean, do I have, you know, twinkles from everyone to work on that language? Is everyone comfortable with that? Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think I can work with that. And we'll, we'll scour the document and see if we find other instances where that sort of language is used. Okay, so residential land use classifications, very low. We didn't make many changes to it, if you feel like there should be. Residential low, very minor changes. Medium, none. Those still feeling right in terms of descriptions of those land use activities. Diversity of choice in residential environments, you know, we have the ambitious goal to build all, you know, all different housing types. We want to make sure that we're, you know, hitting, we've done a really great job of low income. We want to make sure we're hitting, you know, the missing middle. And really, there's been no upper income housing developed in Arcata for decades.
Yeah, this is, this is a, a little bit of a language issue. It refers to L U two B, diversity and choice in residential environments. It refers to housing consumers. And, and I, I think we really need to think of people who live in houses as residents and not consumers in that housing should be as much a right as a commodity. So it's, it's subtle, but it's kind of important when you're talking about long-term policies for who we're planning for.
Got twinkles all around? Is everyone okay with that? Okay.
Can I ask, are, are we trying to quantify what low income, middle income workforce housing is? Is there a way to do that?
There is, and that's one of the topics that we're going to bring to you in the next couple of meetings, to have a full discussion on that. That's been of interest to many different people for many different aspects of how it applies to the code. The super high level, short answer is that affordable housing is a term that's very context-specific. And depending on the context in which you use it, it can mean many different things. And so we'll try and present to you that full range of how that term is used and then define for you what specifically we mean by affordable housing for different income groups. It's identified in the housing element, which is not being updated in this general plan cycle because the housing element was just updated in 2019. They're updated on a regular schedule based on state mandate and we have an eight-year housing element cycle. And so it'll be updated again in 2027. So we'll, we'll get into details on that in the next couple of meetings.
And I think one of our existing FAQs on the website gives a broad brush of that.
And I think one of our existing FAQs on the website gives a broad brush of that because, yeah, it has come up before, and so I can resend that if you'd like to see it.
We're getting dangerously close to the end of time. We're at about seventeen of thirty-three pages here. I want to make sure that we provide, uh, you know, free-form discussion. I know both Commissioner Simmons, Commissioner Mayor provided some, uh, pre-written input that they want to get to. So if it's okay with everyone, if we can put a timeout on my presentation and then get to your dis- discussions?
Are you at a point where if we need to continue, you can, you're at a point where you can pick back up at our next meeting?
I think so.
Okay, then I think that makes sense.
And I guess I would offer, if there's anything else in this document that you have been, you know, wishing you could say, but we haven't gotten to it yet, and you feel like we can wrap up tonight with your, your comments by stating that now, let's, let's go for that first.
So are you saying we're, we're going to get through residential land uses and then we're going to come back to it at our next meeting?
Yeah, we have one more meeting planned for the land use element. My hope would be that we've, um, completed it by then. Um, you know, at least this first, first blush on it. We've got a pretty ambitious, uh, schedule of bringing these elements to you. Um, and, and, you know, we can schedule some, you know, study sessions, some, you know, outside working sessions, some extra meetings, uh, to get through the content if we need to go through them in, in more detail. I think that, you know, the land use and growth management elements are, you know, there, there are some of the, the bigger policy changes that we're making, and so it makes sense to, uh, you know, spend the time on it. Um, but I'm also recognizing that we have a full schedule for, uh, for our meetings.
Go ahead, Matt.
Thanks. Um, do you mind pulling up the, uh, map? Yeah, so I, I wrote, uh, my letter to you all about this. Um, and it, it actually, I'm glad we just talked about neighborhood character because it, it goes with that conversation. Um, I think, I was looking at this map and I was thinking about places where, you know, more people who don't own their home, or more people who want maybe a condo someday, or would want to live closer to places they can walk to or bike to, places that have the most opportunity for that. And I, I didn't do anything sort of scientific. I just sort of drew a square around the existing, uh, planned upzoned areas. Uh, and that included, you know, the neighborhood that runs, um, it has an awkward sort of shape, like a triangle almost going down into the plaza, and then the, uh, Bayview neighborhood. And, you know, this really, it came partially from, I frequently walk through the Bayview neighborhood, uh, going to and from Cal Poly Humboldt. And, you know, you cross Fourteenth Street, uh, and there are single-family homes right next to a college campus where students are struggling to find housing. Um, and, you know, it just feels to me like these areas that are so close to downtown and to the college deserve to allow more density than they currently do. Um, I don't think that, you know, this would change everything overnight. Um, but I do think that some change there is appropriate and that we as a commission should consider recommending to staff, uh, looking at that. Um, I also will mention that I received, uh, messages from members of the public telling me, you know, why not this neighborhood? Why not that neighborhood? And I, I really just chose these places because they are so central and so located around, um, you know, the plaza and Cal Poly Humboldt. But if there are other areas that other commissioners think could also benefit from more density, I, I'm more than happy to talk about them. Um, I, I, I open it to all of you, I guess.
Yeah, I'd like to second what Matt said. Um, in my neighborhood, which is north of the plaza, there are a number of, um, single-family homes that are on lots that are big enough. Um, they're, they're probably not legal to put a second dwelling on the lot, but certainly there could be a second dwelling on the lot. And the city should allow it, should encourage it.
I, I guess, I guess first, un- under, um, it, the new laws, most of those properties could have one, um, or two additional dwellings, um, built on them already. Um, and as far as the area, I think, Matt, that, that you're talking about that Bayview Neighborhood Conservation Area, um, covers a lot of that. And, you know, given the heat of the battle over the standards set for that neighborhood over the past twenty-some years, um, I, I, I think you're right. If that's something that, um, enough people think should happen, it, it could be that the place to have those discussions is right here in the Planning Commission, um, rather than somewhere else. Um, the discussion about increased density, especially in the areas, um, just south of campus, um, has, has consumed an enormous amount of political, um, traction in town over, over the past generation. And it may be time to reopen that discussion now. And I guess, I guess, uh, the land use section of the general plan might be the place to do it. So that may be something that we want to talk about, um, right now. I suspect that, um, those proposals will encounter major pushback. Um, but ignoring that discussion and just, um, assuming that decisions of the last twenty years should stand is, is maybe something that, uh, we should tackle in this room.
Go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, um, just observing, and I do live in that area, the Bayview area. Um, all-new construction that I've observed, except for one, I think, um, has included in at least an ADU. And anything that was more like speculative construction, like for rent, has maxed out to the square foot, everything they could do up to the, where the state law and the city law come together. Um, so I, uh, land availability, I think, would be the other topic if, if we did change the zoning. Um, because already state law allows an ADU, the state and the city allow a third unit if one of, one of the two is contiguous, right? So, um, you could densify most lots within both of those districts that you're talking about, or anywhere in the city. You could do it tomorrow. So then, if there was an actual change in zoning to go further, there would, you know, what land availability is there without having to buy some rather expensive homes and remove them and create an open enough area that, you know, you'd build some kind of high-density structure? And I, you know, the land just doesn't exist in, as an open space right now. The Mormon Church site was probably the last large site, and it got divided into five lots, um, and developed. And there's ADUs attached to both of the ones that have been developed so far, I think. So I don't know, you know, how, where you would build anything more dense, yeah.
Yeah, so I think I'm particularly thinking of those places where you might need to tear down a home and build something new. And, you know, I don't think, what happens in a lot of communities where you have single-family zoning and the value of land is going up and up because it's a high-demand area, but you keep the single-family zoning, is that you tear down the existing home and you build a much more expensive home on that same lot for, for one person, right? And I think what I would like to see is changing the zoning to allow multifamily before that happens, right? Before it becomes a neighborhood that is even, you know, wealthier and has more expensive homes. Um, and it sort of has to be done preemptively, right? You have, you have to, um, because once you tear down the home and build the new expensive, uh, you know, I'm avoiding the word mansion, but like, like brand-new expensive single-family home, um, that's just another long period of time where that's going to be the structure on any individual space. Um, and so I, I really don't think this would have, like, an immediate huge impact because I think there are a lot of people who live there and who don't want to leave, and that's perfectly fine. I'm just thinking with like sort of the natural, uh, you know, turnover of who owns property, I'd rather we were encouraging increased density rather than increased valued homes at the same level of density.
It strikes me that, um, what we're trying to do with the gateway is not really meaningfully that far away. Um, and is going to be much lower-lying fruit. And we're already in quite a protracted review process with that just from a get-things-done standpoint. It, it, I'm, I'm just not a hundred percent sure what that would look like, but, um, I'm open to hearing what other commissioners have to say.
If I could make a, another observation, I think, um, you know, I'm, I'm hearing where Commissioner Simmons is coming from. Um, there are, you know, a couple other, you know, changes, there are areas that we're trying to focus on, um, you know, in terms of, you know, changing land use to try and reflect, uh, more equity, um, in, you know, throughout the city. One of the ways that we're doing that is by, you know, allowing for, you know, high-density development in areas that have high redevelopment potential. Um, and the nexus between that planning policy and equity is that you are able to, uh, you know, create more housing. More housing means more places for people to live, which, you know, hopefully over time will translate into, you know, better equitable, uh, conditions over a situation where you have, you know, way more demand than you can meet with, with your housing stock. Um, you know, other things that we've, uh, done, we've directed our, um, our consultant to, um, you know, even something as, as maybe pedestrian or, or, you know, um, you know, s- simple as changing the, the zoning, um, maps to, to not reflect color characterizations in the way that historically zoning maps have been designated. If you look at zoning maps throughout the, the U.S., you'll see that, um, uh, low-density areas, high-income areas are represented by colors like green and gold, like our map. Uh, high-density areas are reflected by brown and red. Um, and so, you know, we've asked them to change, change that as, uh, you know, a small gesture towards, uh, you know, an equity lens to try and break up the, the associations that, you know, that we have in our, our land use map. And I think, you know, sharing the, I think it's a very good point that, you know, you already, based on, uh, you know, current state law with accessory dwelling units and, and, uh, small-lot subdivision, SP nine, uh, you can alre- already get, you know, four parcels on an existing single-family home. Um, I think that the change that's being suggested here is, uh, you know, potentially even a, you know, stronger, uh, nod towards equity in the sense that, hey, we're all going to share in this densification. Um, the difference between upzoning and recognizing the existi- existing ability to have higher densities on those properties would be that the upzoning would come with a minimum density standard that's higher than the existing maximum density standard on those properties. So just for you to reflect on the difference between those two things. And it could be that we establish this as a implementation measure to address, uh, the Vice Chair's points about, you know, the, this is kind of coming later in the game in this planning process, and it is a relatively big change. So if we made it as an implementation measure, it's something that we could focus on as we intend to do this in the near future.
Yeah, also, first I'll just say I, I like that suggestion. I think it, it doesn't have to come before any of the work we're currently doing. It's just something I, I see as a potential future step. Um, and then second, I would just point out that even with that change, if you look at that table of, uh, you know, our land use designations by area, right? Most of the city's residential is still very low-residential or low-residential, right? And so there are still lots of other opportunities where you can have your segregated, low, uh, density area. Um, I'm just thinking that these areas that are really at the center of town, right? And that I think if we're, if there wasn't this, uh, regulatory pressure keeping them the way they are, would change. Uh, we should consider looking at that.
But what about neighborhood character, man?
I've already said how I feel about neighborhood character.
Did you have something to add to that, David?
Nope.
Okay.
Thank you.
We're at eight-thirty. I would like to pause this discussion here.
Before we go, can we ask if members of the public have any, any comments to add? Um, just because the previous comments were on things not on the agenda. And if they have comments on things that we are presently talking about, this would be a good time to know what they are.
Absolutely. That's why we'd like to pause our discussion. And here, if there's anyone in the public that would like to speak to this issue.
I definitely have something to say. I, like, six months ago, sent you an article and a video on, on Miami and the Wynwood neighborhood. And this is a perfect example of what we're addressing. You know, just to give you a background, if you didn't read that article, it was, it's a primarily Hispanic neighborhood, Puerto Rican. And I'm just really surprised how, um, no one's bringing up the point of what these people felt with their single-family houses, how they felt forced out of the area from mid-rises that were built pretty much close to their property. And there was, I mean, pretty emotional testimony about how an elderly person in their house and these things about tr- parking and how they couldn't even get out of their driveway or they couldn't have a friend, you know, come visit them. And, and then having an entertainment district nearby, which is like the Barrel District, and having people come and piss in their yards because there's not enough bathrooms. And, you know, i- it was pretty, uh, emotional. And I don't, I don't know whether any of you even saw that, but it, it's, uh, another side of this whole argument that you're not addressing, that, uh, even look at California from the standpoint of Los Angeles. I mean, this has been a big subject matter, and where they put their hu- mid-rises was right along the metro lines. And, you know, maybe I'm the only one that goes in public transportation down in Los Angeles, but you look out the window there and you're going by all these cities, some of them are wealthier, some of them are poorer. They're not like willy-nilly, just putting up high r- mid-rises all over these neighborhoods because of what I'm describing. And they also have, you know, people with master's degrees that, you know, have a lot of experience doing these studies. And I'm a little, uh, a little concerned how, um, you know, from the standpoint of probably budgets, and you're all doing your best, but we have a lot of people that probably have never even taken a, a class in urban design that are just saying, oh, let's, let's like have higher density in this area or that. And where is the studies to back this all up? You have no idea what the traffic situation is going to be like. Um, you have no no, no knowledge how this is going to affect parking. It's just like, you know, let's just park all the street, it's all going to work out fine. There's no data on this at all. So I, I'm just like in shock how casually this is being done without any studies or anything. Um, I mean, just the whole idea from the gateway standpoint is, um, I mean, their, your first paragraph or first page is basically you're addressing sea level rise. So, you know, it's a highly questionable why you want to invest so much money and time in an area that's going to be affected by sea level rise. That's like the most fundamental question right there.
Thank you.
James Becker, tonight I will cede my time to Fred Weiss.
Yeah, thank you. This is Fred Weiss. Um, uh, first, um, Zoro Place is density of sixty-four units. It's, uh, point-six-nine acres. As, uh, it's on the city's website. They share a driveway with an adjoining, or they use the, uh, space for adjoining parcel, so which they would otherwise need. So it's, I figured about fifty-five units for, per acre. They, they require, they don't have the space for their own driveway. They're using the, the lot next door for the drive, their entrance, okay? Um, so nominally sixty-four, but in actuality fifty-five, roughly. Um, the, um, The, all the maps, all, all the detailed maps are great. It'd be helpful, I think, for me or the public to have either street views or Google Earth views so we can really see what's there. As an example, commercial mixed use is going from 15 to 50. It's a sizable change. What is that? What is that? It's North Town all along G Street. It's south of Samoa, Fourth Street Market, Live from New York. If they wanted to tear it down Live from New York, they could build a, a building there. 50 units per acre. The area south of Safeway, which is all single family residences. The, and a question I have is commercial mixed use required to have commercial on the, in the bottom floor? Because that would, that would be ideal from my point of view. Okay? And then housing above it. The, I do have some specific items that I want to go over. And I did, two weeks ago, turned in my comments about Judith's comments. And I want to make sure that they're noted. I can note them here or we can look at my letter that I sent. The, I also want to say, the, I put up an article recently or K21.com, it's called visualizing density relative to what you're saying about Zoro Place. And it has a variety of densities between 30 and 50 to see what they actually look like. The, in terms of specific things, LU1B, and David, if it's easier, I can send you notes afterwards. It says promotion of infill development when it's surrounded by existing urban development. It's usually not surrounded, it's usually on an edge. So that's a small, small word change there. Echoing what Commissioner Mayor said about ministerial pathway, an L1, LU1D. LU1E, I think needs rewording. It says now, the purpose shall be to maintain an appropriate balance between single family housing. The land use map shall provide sufficient quantities of land in various residential use categories to allow for development of a variety of new housing units and residential environments. I don't know if we're going to be able to provide single family housing. So you may want to watch that. There's a couple of small language things. I'll, I can easily just send it to you. In terms of Commissioner Simmons' comments, I, I drew out the maps because I was curious to see what you were referring to. And between that and the possibility of getting rid of compatible with established neighborhood character, I think if the word got out that this is what, where you're going to make this high density, you would see 100 people here. As, as Commissioner Mayor said, this is a real hot topic for these particular neighborhoods. I will be very careful about changing that language of, but I understand the, the idea, but it's, it's really been a hot one. And, and, and when I say if word got out, I meant if it's in the papers or that kind of thing. Let's see. The, one thing I wanted to talk about, oh, and, and the likelihood of tearing buildings down, I think it's very different here. I think our housing costs are, are such that it's not, it's not similar to other cities. There was an appeal on A Street about compatibility. You can, people here know about it. I think that decision was improper, but it did, the buildings were built and they're not, they don't fit in with the neighborhood at all. You can, where the Mormon church was, if you know that, yeah. You had mentioned about affordable housing. The article that I wrote that you have in your mailbox, there's four definitions that have been used in this chamber. Okay? And, and, but again, what I wrote is not a manifesto, it's a place for, to start the conversation. The, in closing, I'd like to speak off topic because the vice chair spoke off topic at the beginning. And I want to make sure that my comments are not misunderstood. I am not saying that I don't want to see things above four story. I'm not saying that we have to end the conversation there. In fact, there's a site that is currently six. I'd like to see an eight story building there. There's a site that's currently five, I'd like to see a six. I just want to ensure that the community benefit program that we've been working so hard on is not dissipated. Building five and six is difficult for builders. It's easier to build four or seven or eight. So we have this kind of dead zone there that we, we have to figure out something creatively so that we can have the community benefits regardless of what the builders come in and what, what they're going to do. That, that's it. Okay? Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Alex Bauton. I just wanted to comment on stuff that Councilor Simmons brought up about why won't we upzone a lot of these places suggested for residential high up to commercial mixed? And I wanted to just provide my support because creating more neighborhoods where there are services close to people will bring less cars on the road and just bring about better senses of community in those little neighborhoods. And just allowing people that work there at these potential commercial sites and also just people that want to use those services, like every time we can bring a car off the road for any little journey is great. And I think it would also, one of the previous people at the public mentioned the issue of increasing density causing like traffic concerns by having them be commercial as well, that could potentially reduce that because they don't need the cars for journeys. And, you know, that could help tremendously for a lot of environmental goals that we want to set for our community. That's all.
Thank you.
Commenters online, David?
We do have a couple. Go ahead, Colin.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is Colin Fisk with CRTP, the Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities. First, I want to thank you for having the discussion about the potential for upzoning in some of those additional areas, particularly near downtown and the university. I do think that upzoning in those areas that are near destinations that are walkable and bikeable is a good idea. And while I acknowledge that recent state laws have allowed for some sort of, you know, soft density in the form of ADUs and small lot subdivisions, I think the economics of it mean that that will be much slower to happen or likely not happen at all at a, at a large scale, unfortunately. And so, you know, the upzoning allows us to, a greater chance of seeing some more density in those, in those more central areas. I also want to address the issue of the limitations on residential density, the dwelling units per acre that was early in your conversation, and just pose the question of why we are limiting residential density at all when we're trying to encourage housing. I think as Joe Maitier pointed out, you know, this is one of those restrictions that entered the zoning codes at a time when we were doing what I would call the suburbanization of zoning codes. And, and some of our older neighborhoods, which are more desirable and, and we now like better, you know, were built before we had these restrictions. So I would encourage you to look at why we even have dwelling unit per acre restrictions and instead, you know, focus on the form-based approaches rather than limiting housing production. On the question of parking mandates, we strongly support eliminating parking mandates citywide. And on the question of, you know, where the options are, my suggestion would be that you look at implementing stricter maximum requirements near transit, but get rid of the minimum mandates everywhere so that, you know, where there may be fewer options, developers can choose to provide some additional parking, but certainly we don't need to be mandating it anywhere in the city. I also appreciate the conversation about established neighborhood character. We do need change, and I think everyone recognizes and agrees that we need to see some changes. And having this language about, about protecting established neighborhood character just makes it very difficult to change. So thank you for your discussion and look forward to seeing what's next.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Jane.
Good evening again. Really good discussion tonight. I'm glad we got to go through all these various areas and issues. I wanted to reinforce the concept that Judith Meyer raised as the fact that we need to go back and look at the overall vision for the city since we have never done a survey, although we did do visioning work early on in this, but we should look at the vision encapsulated in the original plan and whether we need to modify that. I think it's also very important to consider including the state law discussion and whatever kind of paragraph or paragraphs you want to put in there, discussing what's going on. I think it needs to be in there and the implications for density. I also think we absolutely need to have a discussion of what is meant by streamlined or ministerial review because there are a variety of options included in the form-based code. And those need to be clearly identified as to what areas we're talking about and what kinds of buildings. And then last but, but not least, Happy Valley, if you look at where it's located, it's right on the trail that goes directly to HU. And the fact is that would be a great place to put high, multi-story housing for students. They could get right on the trail and zap right over on bike or walk or skateboard or however they wanted to get from there over to Cal Poly. And the trail is right there. And it's a lot of land that the city owns and the city could participate in developing that as well. Or it doesn't have to be industrial. There's no reason it has to be industrial just because it happens to be in that particular area. It's in the middle of the forest, you can put high, high-rise buildings there. And students could go zap right over to Cal Poly Humboldt. So I hope you'll consider that as a potential mixed use or mixed use residential specifically available for students as well, as well as worker, people working in these industrial areas that are right down the road on West End because they need to have housing as well. So you could have a variety of uses right there and there's lots of space. Thank you very much. Good discussion tonight. Look forward to more.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Lisa. Go ahead and try again. I see you just unused it.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is Lisa Brown, and I wanted to alert you first off that I sent an email around 5:30 this evening to further explain my concerns regarding the sphere of influence and the urban services boundary with respect to agricultural land on the western edge of the city. And I did a, a little map also attached to that email to help identify the area that I am concerned about. And I also made a number of specific changes that I suggested to some of the language you went over tonight. And the packet pages do not reflect today's packet simply because it seems to be a moving target, but hopefully you can track those changes on my email. As per tonight's discussion, one of the guiding principles and goals is to retain agricultural resource lands within the city. And in the proposed zoning changes, I am opposed to the RA parcel on Foster Avenue being rezoned to RM densities. So that is a residential ag parcel. It's on the edge of the city, but it's within the city. It is prime agricultural soil. And this property, it's a small, smaller property. It is essentially the gateway to the Arcade of Bottom. And along with the Cypress Grove AE property across the street from it, it creates an important transition from the urban to the rural setting of the bottom. So again, I do not believe that it is appropriate to rezone that to urban densities. We don't have to rezone and upzone everything at this point in time. There is a future. And so to be consistent with our guiding principles and goals, these smaller parcels are really great for young people to get into agriculture. They're good for smaller CSAs, market gardens, any number of agricultural pursuits. I also wanted to just chime in with Jane's comment about getting some residential zonings in the kind of west end, I say Happy Valley, I'm not totally familiar with that particular parcel, but, you know, even the cannabis zone.
Thank you.
We really need to relook at that area. Because it is so close to the school for residential.
That's your three minutes, Lisa. Thank you so much for your comments.
And perhaps do a flip flop even with, with some of the property that we're looking to develop to residential off Samoa.
Lisa, can you hear us?
That's three minutes. Thank you so much.
That residential would be better placed, close.
Okay. We, we tried. Go ahead, Sheri.
Hi, good evening again. I think density bonus projects are much more likely than community benefits program projects. Considering this, it's important for the planning commission to review what kind of density can be expected under density bonus. Also regarding SB nine, there are developers in LA explaining how to use SB nine to put eight units on single family lots. By a lot split, then you have two duplexes, two ADUs and two junior ADUs. Also, the state is considering eliminating SB nine residency requirements, and that will encourage even more SB nine projects. So those need to be considered. Regarding maximum density, rules are made to be broken, right? But we need to have some rules. I hope the planning commission agrees to the maximum density per acre standards as are currently proposed and not some sort of expanded densities beyond that. Please do not approve ministerial review standards that restrict the planning commission's ability to review. If projects meet objective standards, builders will have their projects approved promptly. But I really think that we need and we value planning commission input. And regarding cars, no one is going to move here from LA without a car and limit their lives to involve nothing but walking a few blocks between their apartment and the grocery store. Their cars will be parked around town wherever they can be wedged in. Or this will drive more people to living in outlying areas where they can have their car. When they come to town, they'll circle around looking for parking. So some kind of balance needs to be found there and part of the solution is better transit. Not everyone can walk and bike everywhere. And finally, without established neighborhood character, we will become Emeryville. It is possible to increase density without throwing quality design out the window. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all the public comment we have. All right, given that, we will move to correspondence and communications. Items may be put on the agenda in advance. They do not require a vote. Do we have any correspondence from planning commission members?
Wasn't there going to be another comment about our scheduling from staff?
Continuing that until we finish our discussion at our next meeting.
We are? I wasn't aware of that. I wasn't aware of that.
So just real quick to that, I sent the Planning Commission an email with the dates. I wanted to disclose that to the public at this meeting. We'll put it up on our website, and then we'll talk about it next time.
Perfect.
Okay.
Staff correspondence?
The only correspondence I have for the commission is that I was honored to sit on a panel with the Assembly and Senate committees that are dealing with housing. They were particularly interested in how the state law changes that had happened since the, you know, raft of housing bills in 2017 and the updates, all of which we've been talking about today and through this whole discussion, density bonus, housing accountability, the changes to housing element law, AB 2011, SB9, changes to ADU law. They really wanted to hear from, you know, first, the state representatives as to how they saw the impact of these bills producing housing statewide. They wanted some local examples. I presented along with the mayor's office from San Francisco and the Community Development Department from Pomona to try and get a sense from, you know, a broad swath of urban areas throughout the state. And then it was followed up by discussion from, from developers and their point of view on how these laws have impacted, you know, their ability to bring housing to market. And, you know, it was a very insightful conversation. My main takeaway that I wanted to communicate to you tonight from that experience was that it does appear from that discussion that the intent at the state level is to continue to try new methods to try, you know, all methods to try and create additional housing. I did convey to, to that group that, you know, we viewed, you know, bills like Assembly Bill 2011, which allows for housing development, high-density housing development on any property that has retail, commercial, or parking as a principally permitted use, as a principally permitted activity, as sort of the antithesis of zoning. It's like anti-zoning, and it's a sure sign of desperation throughout the state that they're having to implement laws that effectively strip local jurisdictions of any review authority whatsoever. And so it was, you know, interesting conversation. I hope that it's recorded. If it is, I'll provide you a link to that. But I did just want to report that, you know, number one, proud to say that Arcata was recognized as one of the, they had good actors, is what they, they told me, they were looking for good actors. So we're seen as a good actor, and that, you know, there's more to come.
Great. Congratulations on that and happy for the city's progress. There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.